We are ready to convene the Monday, June 21st, 2010 City Council meeting. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Finn.
President.
Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamie. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Mondi. President Coughlin.
Present.
Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine members being present. We have a quorum. I ask all the councilors to please rise and have a moment of silence for divine guidance and to pause and reflect upon service of our men and women in uniform, serving both here at home and in harm's way across the sea. Could please turn and face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Take your time.
Before taking up the matters on tonight's agenda, I just wanted to beg the indulgence of my colleagues for a moment to express my gratitude and that of my family for the expressions of support and comfort and kindness that have been shown to us by so many over the last week since my mother's passing. Those expressions have been no more poignant than those that have been offered by my colleagues who are sitting here in this well. I also want to thank most profoundly the doctors and the nursing staff at the Quincy Medical Center, especially in the intensive care unit. Their professionalism, their compassion was beyond any expectation and quite honestly highlighted for me in a very personal way and for my family, the importance of sustaining this hospital. And lastly, I want to ask for the continued patience of my constituents as I try to regain my stride in fulfilling my obligation to them. Since my father's passing seven years ago, my mother's care was a loving responsibility of my wife, my family, and myself, and her passing has left a tremendous void. And once again, I want to thank everyone for their kindness over the last week. With that, Mr. Clerk, if we could please have the first item on tonight's-
First item on the agenda, Mr. President, that the city clerk is hereby directed to notify voters of the city of Quincy, members of the Democratic, Republican, and Libertarian Parties. This is the call of the election for November, I'm sorry, September 14th primary and November 2nd final.
Counselor McFaulin, we waive the reading, seconded by Counselor McNamie. We need to take a roll call on this matter.
We do, Mr. President. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor McNamie.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Mondi.
Present.
Yes. President Coughlin.
Yes. We have nine members-
Nine members.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative. That member is adopt- that matter is adopted. The next item on the agenda-
Next item on the agenda is the second part of this order that the following places for the state primary election to be held in the city of Quincy on Tuesday, September 14th, 2010, and state election to be held in the city of Quincy on November 2nd, 2010, designated as follows.
Counselor McFaulin moves, we waive the reading, seconded by Counselor Palmucci.
No change in precincts.
Everything remains the same. We're going to have a roll call.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor McNamie.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Mondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative. That matter passes.
Next item, Mr. President.
Just a quick question, City Clerk. Mr. Clerk, we're going through a census. Could you enlighten us as to when there will be some issues relative to the wards and precincts, and when do we need to get up either by a subcommittee of the council or working with your office? I mean, when is that decision made now that the census is about to be completed?
The federal census, as you know, is probably 80 percent complete. We're still working with them every day. They're into their, beyond their renumerators, they're now going in back to places where they've received no response. Everything should be done on before September 1st. It then goes all to the U.S. Census Bureau. We will know the number sometime in early 2011. Then we get 90 days to comment on the number mid-2011. The governor appoints the reapportionment committee, and it will be in place, I'm told, for September of 2012, in between historically-
So the next-
The city council forms a committee expecting late '11, a year from now.
So whatever ward changes or precinct changes are in place, they will be in place by the next state election of 2012.
2012. They won't be in place for '11, but we'll be working on them. As you know, under the Constitution, one man, one vote. Every elected representative ideally represents within 5 percent the same amount of people in that-
And the most dramatic impact would be in wards three and four with the High Point development, that that's a significant amount of people. They were not there 10 years ago.
My experience is that Ward 3-1 has grown, Ward 6-3 has grown. It's almost to its capacity. In a few other spots in Ward 4, Counselor, but the city is pretty much at max. I'm hopeful, as you all know and all of you are on the Complete Count Committee, that I don't think there's 100,000 residents of Quincy, but I'm certain that we're in the over 90, and it's very important to us to get to that number, and then we work from the precinct level up.
Now, the process, Mr. Clerk, the Commonwealth defines their representative and senatorial districts, and we do the wards and precincts. Is that the process?
Every precinct is made up by so many census blocks. We establish the precincts, then the precincts are broken into wards, they go to the state, and the lowest denominator for them after we send it is the state representative districts, and then they build up from there.
So we define the precincts in the wards?
Correct.
And is that a local decision that is reviewed by the Commonwealth or just a local decision that is adopted by the Commonwealth?
The Commonwealth has a board that the governor appoints. We bring our final plans before them, and when they okay them, then they print, they order the secretary to prepare everything for September 2012 reflecting that. So it wouldn't affect the city till '13, but it'll, two years from now, be in effect for the state election.
And with the, I mean, you've been, at least your second time going through this, Mr. Clerk.
Actually, it's my third, but second as clerk, correct.
Knowing the changes that you envisioned, is this something that the city needs to start to work on six months out or a year out, or do you envision such minor changes that it will not be a problem?
My experience is, in an older city such as Quincy, where certain things you cannot change, Ward 6 starts at the end of Squonham and comes into North Quincy. Ward 1 starts in Hausneck and Germantown and comes here. Ward 4 starts at the Blue Hills and comes down. Ward 2 starts at the shipyard and comes up. So the further out precincts probably are going to change very little. The changes always end up, as well as councilors, in 2, 3, and 5. No, generally in the square area because of the way we bring them forward, and we're supposed to take certain geographical boundaries into consideration, and we do. I think a year from now in '11 that we'll know where we're going to go, and that's the time to start looking at it. I think that our timeframe, because we have experienced people that have done it before, I'm fortunate enough to have a warden who's a retired cartographer, Barry Steinberg, you may know him, he's a warden in Ward 2, and he really is a great aide to the board, and I think we're going to be in pretty good shape. But there'll be some changes around School Street, around Russell Park, around this, where we're sitting. And we made some changes to keep all of the square in Ward 5 last time for purposes of development, et cetera, and we're going to try to continue that, so. But the council has traditionally formed a committee to look at it, and I'm sure it will again, and we'll be happy to work hard on it.
I'd ask the chairman, I know you will, Mr. President, to be mindful of that fact that we need to have some input into that decision because obviously it affects all of our constituents. Just as a point of reference, I've been living on the same streets since I was in the third grade, a couple of different houses, but pretty much in the same neighborhood.
You've been in three wards.
Started out Ward 1 area was moved to 2, then 3, back to 2, and Ward 5 is right next door. So that's the dynamic that occurs in a relatively short period of time. So I think the clerk is right, all those folks that are in the downtown area and those communities that immediately affect the downtown, their voting precincts could change, their ward councilors could change, and I think the sooner we get the information, make a decision, get the word out, the better facility we will have with whatever election comes up, whether it be 212 or 213, so. It was a good process, I think, 10 years ago. I think the council was involved with that. The City Clerk was very helpful, cooperative, and there weren't no complaints, as far as I know, relative to the guidelines. I think that's the footprint we need to follow, is just to make sure that as many people are involved in the process and that it's open and people have an opportunity to be heard, even though we are, as a city, constricted in the amount of folks that live in a particular area, and there's only, everyone will say, well, why don't they take the whole street? And the clerk will let us know that, well, that's another block and you can't do that. It's a very complicated but a very efficient process, so hopefully, Mr. President, we'll have ample opportunity to review that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. That's an important point. I think most people became acclimated to it after a while, although there was certainly changes to voting locations. People who were proximate, for example, to the Bernazani School then ended up voting down at the bottom of Whitwell Street. I used to vote at the Montclair. I, you know, everyone in my street moved to Wallaston, so there were those types of changes where, you know, people just had to become adjusted to their new voting location, but certainly you can, Mr. Clerk.
Through you, Mr. President. That is a matter of discussion every year. We are a city that, and we did present a plan before, that knocked the precincts down from 30 to 24, Counselor. I knew you were familiar with it, and I was proud of it. I think in some cases, we could go to 18 precincts, but we're a city that gives excellent service and people vote in their neighborhood, and the appetite was not to change it. However, having said that, there's somebody who lives at the furthest end of the precinct. There are people who live in Quincy Square that are across the street from Ward 2, Precinct 4, and 5, and they vote in 5-1. It's undeniable. Somebody has to live on the end. But when you wrestle with the census blocks, we can't break a block, et cetera. Now, without making any promises here, Mrs. Halls and myself and the board have looked at that corridor along School Street with hopes of putting it in Ward 2, but until we see it-
Welcome to Ward 2.
Well, that means I'm going to, generally speaking, I don't want, not because I'm dressing you, but that's probably the most grievous, that's probably the most grievous in the city. I mean, if you live in Squonham, you go to Squonham School. If you live in Hausneck, you go to Thomas Aquinas or the library, but it's not an exact science. However, in some perverse way, as a clerk, I enjoy redistricting. Other clerks tell me I should have my head examined, but I do enjoy it, and-
Mr. President, before anybody's time here, but there was a time when this matter was so controversial that there was a city council vote on redistricting, realigning, and a ward council actually voted to eliminate his position.
Eliminate his position. I do remember that. He was a Ward 3 counselor.
So that's something we need to avoid at all costs, I guess. But it is an important decision. I think we've been very blessed with the work of the City Clerk making sure-
Every attention will be paid, but last thing. My experience with the committee that the governor appoints, the state committee, once you show them your state representative seat and your state senator's seat, they generally ask questions about if there's a minority community, are they fairly represented. After that, they never ask me about the city council, while school community is that larger, but I mean, but you have to start from the bottom and work up.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's something that we'll probably pick up every now and then, and I think it's important to keep it on the front burner, so people know that in a couple of years, there may be some significant changes, hopefully not too significant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, the next item on the agenda-
Next item is number three on the agenda. Upon the request of the Director of Municipal Finance, with the recommendation of his honor of the mayor, the sum of $512,073.33 is appropriated in the following manner. To mayor personal services, $1,800. Municipal finance personal services, $15,000.
Counselor McFaulin moves, we waive the reading of this-
These are the year-end transfers, Mr. President.
That we typically see-
Every June.
Counselor Keenan, did you want to speak to this?
If Mr. Puleo could.
Have Mr. Puleo step up.
Provides with an explanation of the-
Thank you.
-year's transfers.
Through you, Mr. President. There's a number of transfers required for year-end. I think I mentioned a number of times during the budget hearing, a lot of the projections that we're doing them, in many cases, 15 months in advance of the end of the next fiscal year. So some things have come in a little off. This is the case every year. So we're asking for the $382,000 in transfers to close out, actually-
Is it 512?
512. I'm looking at the old order.
The old, yes, all right.
The $512,000 in transfers. Some of these are retirement, sick-time buyouts. Some other ones are, for instance, the snow and ice overtime. There was some money left over in the maintenance line in that account. We just transferred it in, so the end-of-the-year shortfall in that account was all logged in the same place to make accounting easier at the end of the year, so I can answer any specific questions you might have on these.
Any councilors have questions for Mr. Puleo?
Through you, Mr. President. I'm just, are we on item number four, which is the 800, or is this a late order?
No, number three, the year-end transfers.
Year, oh, I see. Okay, got it. I'm sorry. Forgive me. I'm caught up now.
Okay. Typical year-end business that we engage in each June at the last meeting. Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. Puleo. I noticed we do have a transfer here from snow and ice maintenance to snow and ice overtime. It's moving money from one to cover the other. What are the plans for the snow and ice deficit? Are we going to be able to split that over a couple of years in the upcoming fiscal years? Are we obligated to do it all in the next fiscal year?
We're obligated to do it all in the next fiscal year, which we intend to do.
So that will show up on our-
It will show up on the tax recap sheet.
On the recap sheet in November, early December.
Correct.
And what's the deficit now? Is it above 1.2?
It's about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars.
Okay.
And the $46,000 here, the maintenance account had a $46,000 surplus, so we just use that to address some of the deficit in the overtime account going forward.
And the anticipation of putting on the recap sheet, basically charging it to next year is, was contemplated in the revenue projections, the tax rate, projected tax rate calculation associated with the FY 2011 budget, is that correct?
Correct, and we are anticipating an operating surplus at the end of the year, so it won't require any draw from our stabilization account.
Thank you. I move passage of the order as presented.
Counselor Keenan moves passage of council order 2010-182, seconded by Counselor McFaulin. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor McNamie.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Mondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative. That matter is adopted. The next item on the agenda?
Next item on the agenda. Upon the request of the Director of Municipal Finance, with the recommendation of his honor of the mayor, the sum of $800,000 hereby appropriated to traffic and parking personal services, saying to be transferred from reserved for appropriation, parking receipts.
Mr. Puleo, you wish to speak to that matter?
Yes, Mr. President. This is the fiscal year 2010 budget offset that was approved by the council last summer. Essentially, this action transfers money from the revenue account to the general fund to pay for the budget item as approved by the council.
Counselor Keenan? Move passage of the order as presented. Counselor Keenan moves passage of the order as presented, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor McNamie.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Mondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes. Nine members-
Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative. That matter passes. Next item on the agenda?
Number five on the agenda, Mr. President. Upon the request of the Director of Municipal Finance, with the recommendation of his honor of the mayor, the sum of $75,000 hereby appropriated to cemetery personal services, saying to be transferred from perpetual care.
Mr. Puleo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Same idea as the previous item, but a different revenue source. This pays for a budgetary offset in the cemetery department. It is derived from the investment returns on the principal on the perpetual care fund, and this will go to pay for a budgetary offset approved by the council last summer.
Move passage of the order as presented. Counselor Keenan moves passage of the matter as presented, seconded by Counselor McFaulin. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor McNamie.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Mondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin. Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative. That matter is approved. Next, thank you, Mr. Puleo. Next item.
Next audit, Mr. President. Number six on the agenda. Audit that city council of the city of Quincy approves the amended tax increment financing agreement between the city and Boston Scientific Corporation, the amended TIF agreement, the amended certified project, and the amended tax increment financing plan substantially in the forms as presented to the city council pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 59, and to authorize the mayor to submit the amended TIF agreement.
Counselor McFaulin moves waiving of the reading.
This is a modification of council order 1997-351, which was the original Boston Scientific TIF agreement.
Mr. Puleo. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Puleo.
Thank you, Mr. President. The tax increment financing amendment before you has been a collaborative effort between the assessing department, the planning department, the mayor's office, and the finance department to come to terms and get the agreement that worked best for all sides. A little background, the tax increment financing agreement is a business development incentive authorized under Massachusetts General Law. Quincy currently has seven such agreements. Boston Scientific, which is being amended tonight, is our oldest. Quincy entered into this agreement in 1997. The original agreement gave Boston Scientific a 16 percent exemption on the value of property improvements above the base year of the valuation rate of the property at 500 Commander Shay Boulevard. The initial promise was to create 280 jobs at the site. Currently, there are 438 jobs. An additional commitment to invest $12.5 million on the site. The original value of the site was $11.8 million. Today, the total value of the site before any credits is $31.1 million. Without the improvements, we estimate that the site today would be worth $17.4 million, which is a substantial difference on the impact of the tax rate for the residents of Quincy and our financing. The agreement before you is not a new TIF. It amends the existing TIF between the city of Quincy and Boston Scientific. It does not extend the number of years of the TIF. We are still working in the same timeframe in terms of the TIF expiration date. What it does do is it is a collaborative effort between the city of Quincy and Boston Scientific to invest an additional $30 million in capital improvements on the site and maintain the current workforce and slightly increase that workforce. The tax increment financing side increases the exemption percentage from 16 percent to 32 percent. And now that, we have worked into the agreement a number of protections for the city of Quincy tax base. Although we are increasing the exemptions from 16 to 32 percent, we have worded the agreement in such a way that ensures that the city of Quincy will receive no less than the current value of the property times whatever the tax rate in that particular year might be for commercial industrial properties. The amendment also does a capital expenditure benchmarking option wherein if by the close of fiscal year 2013, $20 million in capital expenditures are not made, the TIF agreement would revert to the existing 16 percent. Looking at the projections we've done up for the remaining life of the TIF, which is set to expire in 2018, on average, the new agreement will give the city of Quincy approximately a half million dollars per year in new tax revenue.
Mr. Puleo, can you just give me the numbers of jobs that were in the original requirement for the TIF as originally presented?
The original TIF agreement spells out 280 jobs are specified in the original TIF agreement.
Okay, that's the original specification, and how many folks are presently employed there?
Our most recent number from Boston Scientific is 438.
438. And is there a requirement for residents of the city under the original TIF to be employed there? Is there a percentage requirement?
I don't believe it was a percentage requirement. I think that they gave priority to Quincy applicants.
So it was simply an agreement to give some-
Correct, and the folks from Boston Scientific who are here tonight, I think they could verify the exact number of Quincy residents, but I think it's at least a quarter of the employees are Quincy residents.
And does the amendment continue that type of language, or is there anything in there about Quincy residents beyond what's already there?
There's no substantial change to that language. What we are seeking to amend is the requirement for investment jobs and the percent change in the agreement.
Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. Mr. Puleo, what, first of all, I'm glad to see that Boston Scientific is willing to put forth this larger investment, especially in this time. I think it'll be good for the city. It'll also be good for a lot of the folks in the construction trade who ought to work right now, so I'm happy to see this go forward. I do have a couple of questions. This is the first TIF that's been before me on the council, so I apologize if some of my questions are rather rudimentary, but before I can vote on something in good conscience, I need to fully understand it. What year did the original TIF start?
The original TIF was signed, I believe, in 1997, so the base valuation year for the TIF, every TIF starts with a base year on which all the taxation and the increments are based on, so the base year for Boston Scientific is 1998.
Okay, so year one was 1998?
Correct.
Looking at, looking at the, I guess, the ordinance that's before us, in the second whereas, in the middle paragraph, it says, "has significantly exceeded the required new investment in employment requirements and satisfied all other requirements in the agreement." What agreement is that referring to?
That's referring to the original TIF agreement, which we are amending in this council order.
Right.
So that's when we're talking about the original value being $11.8 million.
The original TIF was council order 97-351, right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. I'm looking at that, and it's one page, or that's all that I've been given. There's no, there's nothing, there's no other requirement. I just don't understand what it says, what agreement it's referring to and what other requirements were satisfied. It says, "and satisfied all other requirements in the agreement." Is there something beyond?
I believe the full original agreement is coming over your shoulder as we speak. It's more than the single page.
Okay. Okay, it's more than the single page, and so it should have been... Okay, no, I didn't...
So, for instance, tonight, the council order refers to the agreement.
Okay, I didn't have a copy of that, so I apologize. In the third whereas, it says, "the agreement provided an exemption of 16% in any increased property assessments on the facility."
Correct.
So that's the current TIF referring to the old TIF?
Correct.
And the old TIF, I'm just looking at the language, it says, "an exemption of 16% of the actual assessed valuation." So is it the actual assessed valuation or the increased property assessment? Or is there a difference between those two phrases?
The TIF financing, the formula for what they actually have to pay and how that percent applies is dictated by Commonwealth of Mass regulations that's put out by the Office of Business Development. So what it is, is we have to follow that formula. And what it does is, we start at the base valuation, so for instance, using Boston Scientific, the base year of the valuation was $11.8 million. There's then an inflation factor we apply to that base valuation, so it increases every year. So for instance, all things being equal, no improvements made to the property each year using that inflation factor, if no improvements had been made, the property would be worth $17.4 million. However, the current property value is $31.1 million. So what you do is you look at, you take the current total assessed value, which is the $31.1 million, and you subtract the $17.4 million, which is what the property would be worth had no improvements been made.
And that's from the original?
Correct.
Okay.
And the difference between the two is the number that the exemption applies to.
Okay, and that's what this current TIF says?
Correct.
And that's also what the old TIF says? Because I'm just confused by the way that it uses...
One refers to it as increased property assessments, and the other refers to it as actual assessed valuation.
So they're saying actual assessed valuation in the original TIF?
However it's worded, the mechanics will be the same because it's dictated by Commonwealth of Mass regulations. The language before you now strictly adheres to those regulations, working with Boston Scientific's consulting, our own planning department, and our legal department. So this applies to the agreement. The previous language, and both these counselors go before the state, so the previous language, while it might be a little bit different, the mechanics of the agreement should work the same way. It, I'm not of the litigious mindset, but it might have just been a preference between the attorneys who were working on it at the time. I'm not sure exactly the detail of the language.
So the $17 million in improvements were made in the year 1997?
There were a number of improvements made throughout the years. I can go by the original value. Most of them were made between 1999 and 2003. There were substantial increases in the property value, so I would say that approximately three-year period is when the investments took place.
And so the prior TIF gave a 16% exemption based on the assessed value that year?
The exemption applies to, after you apply the formula, it's the assessed value of the improvements essentially is what it applies to.
Okay, so every year was different?
Correct.
Okay. Based on the amount of new investment?
Correct.
Okay. The fourth whereas indicates that the capital investment will be to improve the facility and to purchase new equipment, including a robotic system to assist with inventory distribution?
Mm-hmm.
Does that, is that going to replace any jobs at the facility?
I think there might be some job fluctuation, but the TIF agreement spells out that it will add five additional jobs on top of what's already there despite the automated systems.
And that's...
So there is job creation in the agreement as well, so it will not supplant the existing workforce over the life of the agreement.
Okay, and that's spelled out in Section C, right?
Correct.
Boston Scientific's obligations?
Correct.
And in that section, it says that they'll increase five new positions from their present workforce. My copy is blank. It says workforce of blank by the end of fiscal year 2013. Is there a number that's going to be added in there, or are we going to pass it with a blank?
438. The blank should be 438.
Okay. No, it's okay. Thank you. And Counselor Coughlin, just to follow up, I think what I heard him asking was, I believe he was asking how many current Quincy residents are employed at Boston Scientific? Do you not, do you have those, that information?
The folks from...
That's the 110?
I believe it's about a quarter of the employees.
Okay, so 110, that's the total head count?
It's in your packet, it's the number, correct.
This, Section 2A is where it calls on the original exemption of 16% to be raised to 32%. And it also says that it's ending in fiscal year 2018.
Correct.
One of the first things you said when you came up tonight is that you're not extending the length of the TIF.
Correct.
You're the city's mathematician. I certainly don't pretend to be, but for 1998, adding 18 years, which is what the original TIF spelled out?
It's a 20-year agreement.
It's a 20, I guess that's because I don't have a second page, so I just have, I guess that's what most of my questions are based on. I don't have all the information, I suppose. I don't, I don't know. This ends at year 18 and what I was provided, and there's nothing else that says it went on. So it was a 20-year TIF originally?
It was.
All right. Maybe I'll reserve any of my remaining questions, and I'll get some additional paperwork, I suppose, to try and figure some of these questions out myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Puglio. Just to try to simplify, if I have a property that's worth $1 million, and I'm seeking a TIF, I agree to invest additional funds into my property, maybe through equipment and whatever the case may be, in structural improvements, for instance. Now, let's say, when I'm done with that, my property's worth $1.1 million. The increase, it's assessed at $1.1 million. The increase in the assessment from $1 million to $1.1 million, ordinarily, the person would be responsible for having the full commercial tax rate applied to that increase in property value. Under the TIF agreement, $16,000 in that example would be exempt from having the commercial property tax rate applied to it. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're not necessarily going backwards in any way, we're just not, we're exempting a certain portion of the increase in the assessed value.
Correct.
Now, in this particular item, we granted the initial TIF back in 1997 with a base year of 1998. For purposes of the amendment, what is the base year, so to speak, that we're doing? Are we using the figure that was back in 1998? Are we establishing 2011 as a new base, which going forward, any increases would be at the 32% rate?
The base year will remain the same, so the base will still remain the $11.8 million. However, going forward with the investments, we're still seeing half million, you know, ballpark half million dollar a year net increases to the City of Quincy tax base. And we've worded the TIF agreement in such a way that ensures us that we will not receive lower than the current valuation against the current value. So even though we're increasing the agreement, the city is guaranteed to get at least what we're getting now, but we'll get more with the investment.
So we're going from a 16 to a 32% exemption?
Correct.
However, in no case will taxes collected go below what we've collected for fiscal year 2010?
Correct.
Okay. Now, in the order that we received in our packet over the weekend, it references 350 jobs as the threshold, which if the Boston Scientific goes below, it triggers some actions by the city. In the order that we have tonight is 375. Are we to use the 375 figure?
It was amended, yes, so it should be 375.
Well, is that counsel?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Keenan. Counselor Ramondi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Puglio. Nick, with respect to the 438 individuals, the base employment status now, there's language that indicates that Boston Scientific, if this is approved, will increase employment, quote, "including full-time contract employees," by at least five new positions. Are those full-time positions, part-time positions, a combination of both?
I believe either would satisfy the agreement, so either a combination of both, or, I think full-time, five full-time equivalents would satisfy it, whether it's 10 half-time people or five full-time people, I think.
So it'd have to be five, the equivalent of five full-time new employees?
That would be my understanding.
There's a requirement that Boston Scientific invest about $30 million into the building?
Correct.
Is there a timeframe when that needs to be completed? What is the schedule?
The agreement before you notes that if at least $20 million is not invested by the close of fiscal year 2013, then it would revert back to the current exemption of 16%.
So, on before June 30th of 2013, they would have needed to invest $20 million into the structure?
Correct.
And how is that determined?
It would be determined by examining, again, using that base valuation and looking at, we can tell based on the inflation factors that we use under the state formula.
No, ma'am, how do you know that they've made the investment of $20 million into the building?
We could tell by the assessed value of the property.
So it's not based on building permit application, request for renovation or construction? It's purely the enhancement of value of the property?
It would be, it would be money that they actually invested in the property. I think we could look at, through our assessor process, the permits that are pulled, the types of real fixed property items that are put on the property, and I'm sure we could work with the company to get a capital expenditure schedule as well.
Because what the language indicates is that the corporation agrees to invest $30 million into the building. Assuming that the economy turns around and people start to invest again, the economic climate may look significantly more positive in five years than it looks today. So the enhancement of value, if the company does nothing, may be a portion of this $30 million.
No.
So I guess what I'm asking is that, so it's just not assessed value of the property? It's, they need to invest...
Correct.
$30 million.
Correct. It would be actual investment. And again, that's where the formula comes in. If it was just the increase based on market conditions, we could tell by our math that we do.
Now, this is your first TIF, Nick, and part of the problem is historically, is who's in charge of reviewing and making sure that the agreements are lived up to? So is this going to be part of your responsibility to make sure that these benchmarks are attained?
Yes, yes.
And that you will report back, obviously to the mayor, but as well as to us?
Yes.
Now, the five new positions, does that have a target date as well, where they must be in place, or does that go through the 18?
It's through 2018.
Okay. So if they spend the $20 million by June 30th of 2013, and if they don't do the five new employees through the life term of this agreement, what happens at that point?
The state reviews, this is a partnership, a three-way partnership, I would say, between, all TIF agreements are not, this is not unique to this, between the corporation, the municipality in which the corporation resides, as well as the Commonwealth. So the Commonwealth is very diligent in their review of promises made in TIFs of, on both sides, on the accountability and on the responsibilities put forward. So the state, if something were wrong in the TIF, there would be a process triggered, certainly at our level, but on the state level as well.
But what happens?
I'm not sure that they've had an issue that they couldn't resolve through negotiations.
But if it's the last day of the agreement, and they haven't, so they've already got the benefit, there's been 20 years of decreased real estate tax payments, and assuming that they did the $20 million, because that gets them through that particular category, but they never wind up hiring the other five folks, and now the agreement has lapsed.
We would work to resolve that at the time. I can't, I can't give you a specific answer in terms of our reaction.
Maybe this gentleman can answer that question.
Mr. President, excuse me, members of the council. You have the pleasure of a Nick and Nick Show tonight.
Nick and Nick, good evening.
To your question, Counselor, if the state were to determine that they did not live up to the agreement, the state would move to decertify. If the city found that they did not live up to the agreement, we would move to decertify the TIF.
But again, but they've already enjoyed the benefit over 20 years. So this is the last, if they have until the last day to show that they've hired the equivalent of five new employees, and it's the last day, they've already received 20 years of benefit. As a practical matter, what would the decertification mean?
I imagine that would go to the legal department, and I would defer to them.
Nick, Nick two?
Two. I'm a senior.
Oh, Nick one. Are you familiar with the other six TIFs?
I am familiar to a degree. I'm more familiar with the Bluefin, because I worked on that one.
What was the percentage of exemption in Bluefin, if you recall?
Seventy-five. Sometimes they differ as the years progress, and the numbers will diminish and change.
Right. So that was a, more of a schedule that went across the board?
This one?
Yeah. This one's more of a flat lines?
Yes, it is.
16 to 32. And the Bluefin, as I recall, was more...
Fluctuated, started out higher and decreased.
Does, has anyone in, thank you, Nick. Nick, do you have an estimate as to the amount of personal property tax increase that would result in the build-out of a 20 or $30 million plant with either computers or fixtures or things that would come into the city as a direct result of this arrangement? And is that personal property tax also exempted 32%?
I do have an estimate, the estimate is zero. Under TIF agreements, personal property is exempt, under all TIF agreements statewide.
Okay. So any personal property that they bring on to the site?
Is taxed exempt.
Is taxed exempt. The real estate tax that comes into the city from the current operation would be approximately what?
This year, I estimate for fiscal year 2010, the tax bill, or I know the fiscal year 2000 tax bill, based on the funding, based on the TIF formula, would be $795,000.
Are there any vehicles that are housed at Boston Scientific that would be part of the motor vehicle excise tax owned by the corporation, or housed there?
I'm not aware of any, no.
So this only applies to real estate tax and does not apply to the personal property that would normally be assessed by the assessors?
Correct. And the motor vehicles would be, again, separate from the personal property as well.
That's not...
They're different categories, but the motor vehicles, my understanding, would be not, or would be subject to taxation. It's just the personal property within the structure that is exempt from the personal property tax.
How important is it, Nick, that the company comply with the agreement to invest the $20 or $30 million into the building? How important is that?
That's the crux of the agreement, is that's why we're going to 32%. Because they've proposed making substantial capital expenditure and improvements on the site, so even with the increased exemption, we're going to see significant return on the city side as well. We would not be, we would not be doing something for nothing in either direction.
Because I'm looking at Item C on the last page, which, and I'll quote it, "The city reserves the right to decrease the amended exemption back to the original exemption if Boston Scientific Corporation's full-time employment drops below 375 employees, or if they don't complete by the year 2013 at least $20 million in improvement." Why not make it more mandatory that the city will do that? It just, city reserves a right, but it doesn't mean that it will do that. And this is the mayor's call. I mean, the City Council has no further activity. And again, I get back to the question, that this is a, it's an attractive agreement for the private entity as well as to the city, because it maintains an employment base, and in these difficult economic times, I'm sure Quincy has unemployment factors, just like the rest of the country, between 10 and 15% of knows what the underemployed number is, so it's critically important that we do what we can to maintain the employment base, and they've been a wonderful employer within the city, so I get all of that. But if they are receiving, and again, it was still in the marketplace where an awful lot of folks out there are being challenged with real estate tax, so I get that too. If they're going to get a significant decrease, exempt from personal property taxation with the new equipment, and getting a 32% decrease in the enhanced value of the $20 million that they're invested, why not mandate that they need to do it before 2013, or they will go back to the 16%?
First, let me be clear, there's no decrease in this agreement. Under any scenario, they are paying the same, if not more, taxes to the City of Quincy.
What I said was 50% of the $20 million.
Correct. I just want to make sure for people watching at home or in the audience that there is no tax decrease. This is a tax increase based on the terms of the agreement.
Right.
So it gives us a little bit of flexibility. I know you referred a number of times to the challenging economic times. It's challenging not only on a personal level, but on a corporate level as well. A number of corporations have had great difficulty with access to capital markets, so our concern would be if they are in the midst of doing that $20 million, if they are, say, $18 million in on June 30th, with a planned $8, $9 million to go in July, we wouldn't want our hands tied by a... in July, we wouldn't want our hands tied by an agreement if, if work was ongoing, but certainly if we see no effort to make that expenditure by that time, I think that's the flexibility we need.
This is, is an amendment?
This is an amendment to the existing TIF agreement.
Which means these matters can be amended?
Correct.
And I find the mayor to be reasonable, I think this body is reasonable, so if it came to be that they had a legitimate, either global economic excuse, reason why they could not perform, and if the mayor was satisfied, and the city council is satisfied through a public process, that this is a significant benefit that they're getting, I mean, I'm not going to make the amendment, I'm not the ward council, but I guess I'd feel more comfortable if, if, with the amount of benefit that, that the company is getting, and the promises they're making, if it's really critical, and that's why I asked you that question, if it's completely integral and critical to this arrangement, and they've agreed to expend at least 20 million, not 30, they've agreed to expend 20 million by 2013, we're not that far away, it's 2010 right now, so obviously the economic impact, they need to know now if they can get financing, and so I assume they've done all their due diligence, and things hopefully aren't going to get any worse than what they are now, and that they feel confident that they can raise the money in order to do this, I guess, I would feel a little bit better if there was a, a date that it shall, and then if the mayor wants to bring it back here to review and have a public process, so we can ask questions as to why those employees aren't there, why didn't, they not make that particular investment, but, but I appreciate the work you did in the planning department, and I'm, I'm not going to make that amendment if the ward council wants to, fine, but I just think from this perspective, if 2013 comes and goes, and they have not made the, the investment, if I'm still here, those are the questions that I, that I'd be asking.
I appreciate that, counselor, and the language in the agreement before you is a, is a collaborative effort, like I mentioned before, but it was over two months of negotiations between the city and the corporation, so we feel that the language before you was the, the preferential option for both parties, and we'd prefer, if we could, to do it correctly the first time, and not have to come back to the council and have a successful partnership with Boston Scientific moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McNamee?
Tonight, as in the past, I'll resist efforts by the, the Ward Two Counselor to do my job, I'll let him make his own amendments, the mayor's worked very hard on this, and I acknowledge that, and I recognize that, Nick, do we have anybody from Boston Scientific here?
We do.
Could you-
Mr. Verranis?
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor McNamee, we do have representatives of Boston Scientific, Ed Zelinski from Boston Scientific, the Vice President, Rob McIntyre from Boston Scientific, and Hal Davis representing them for the, for their TIF, I probably, I think you might hear them say, counsel, that they cannot afford not to spend the $20 million by 2013, but I won't put those words into their mouth, and we'll expand on it later.
But is Mr. Zelinski the one that's overseeing the invitation for construction bids for this project, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, again, I don't want to diminish the effort that's gone before tonight's presentation of this by the mayor and his staff, as you know, Boston Scientific is a very large Ward Six employer, and the residents of Ward Six bear the brunt of the trailer traffic, truck, trailer truck traffic that comes in, in and out of that warehouse, as well as the other vehicular traffic, you might also be aware that if we give you this very valuable economic incentive tonight, it casts well into the future the role of this property, this property will remain as a warehouse, and that may not be the next best use for this property from a real estate standpoint, you're next to a very, very successful marina, and this site could very well be a marina as well, overlooking Dorchester Bay, so we're about to give up something very significant from a real estate development standpoint in North Quincy, so I want you to know that the stakes are high, that we're giving a lot here, I also want you to know that we've given TIFs before, we have 100 Hancock Street that we gave a TIF to over a year and a half ago, and it still remains vacant, and at the time that we gave that TIF, there was a promise of jobs, now I understand they're going to say that they have a contract to relocate a state office there, but the building's vacant, that's the fact, and I haven't seen any, anything move in there, the lights are on, and nobody's there, so obviously, you know, when we give out these very valuable economic incentives, we want promises to be kept, and it's in this context that I want to talk to a little bit about, and by the way, call me old-fashioned, but, you know, it was an 80's concept of corporate responsibility, and this notion of, you know, you don't just serve your corporate shareholders, but there's a broader class of individuals that you share, and obviously, that you serve, and obviously, we've fallen on some very hard economic times, we have a lot of people in the construction trades in Quincy that can benefit from this TIF activity, the activity that will come from this TIF, so I want to just put this in the context of the stakeholders, of the working men and women, and their families of organized labor, that have a stake in us granting you this TIF, I'd like to read, if I could, very quickly, you're lucky, I'm one of the fastest guys up here, I'm not going to torture you all night, there's a letter here to Mr. Raymond Elliott, he's the Chief Executive Officer and President of Boston Scientific, as you well know, and this is regarding this proposed expansion, the letter is from the Marco Consulting Group, Dear Mr. Elliott, the Marco Consulting Group is a registered investment advisor to more than 500 institutional investors, who, in the aggregate, own shares in excess of $5,628,000 in your company, of stock in your company, as long-term investors our clients want to invest in companies they can be proud of, this pride comes from both, both from the company's return on investment, as well as their reputation as a fair-minded corporate citizen, yes, a fair-minded corporate citizen, one that keeps their promises, we have been advised that your company is planned to expand a Boston Scientific facility in Quincy, Mass., our clients are firmly convinced that this is in their best interest as shareholders for such projects to be performed by the contractors and workers who are signators to collective bargaining agreements that are thus best-equipped to meet industry standards, the contractors are invariably among the leading established firms in the community where the project is located, and have a proven track record there, they get their high-skilled workforce from joint apprenticeship training programs and ensure quality workers, using them is the best way to ensure that a project is constructed on time, on budget, and to minimize the need for subsequent repairs, we urge you to protect shareholder interests by making sure that every consideration is given to using such contractors in this expansion of the facility in Quincy, Mass., it goes on to make reference, to urge you to contact organized labor and give them an opportunity to bid in this process, now, I have spoken with some of the leaders in organized labor in the South Shore Building Trades, and they have told me that you've made representations to them, to the effect that you understand the interests of their membership, and that you're going to give them an opportunity to bid on this work, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, in the context of keeping promises, being a good corporate citizen, I'm going to take it at your word, but I want to urge you, you know, to please give them a fair shot, you know, we know that you're going to employ people in that building, but you're going to have a long construction phase, and there are plenty of roofers, and carpenters, and laborers that would like to take part in the construction of that building, and they're Quincy, and Quincy workers, and so I'd like to see, you know, you take a keen interest in making sure that those jobs are, are offered.
So I'd like to respond to your request for keeping corporate promises, so Boston Scientific was obligated to create 280 jobs under the original TIF, we created 300, or 430, we were obligated to invest $23 million in the property, we invested $46 million. One of the nuances that hasn't been mentioned in this meeting is the fact that there is a vacant portion of the building on the south side that has been vacant since the early 1990's, we have marketed the property for sale for many years, or for lease, with very few takers, so I'm not sure about your comments about the potential marina, or the potential for condominiums, but we have not seen any interest at that level, one of the great possibilities of this project is when Boston Scientific migrates its operations to the south, that the north warehouse building, which is 387,000 square feet, will become available for another user, and that will be either through a sale or a lease, so that will bring additional jobs and tax revenue into the city of Quincy, which is not available today.
Any further questions, counselor? All right, I just wanted to make sure Counselor McNamee's all set, all set?
No, I think that, you have been a good corporate citizen, in fact, the building is kept in immaculate condition, you have a very, very large building there, we're often concerned about graffiti, security's, you know, perfect, no, you are a good corporate neighbor, and I think you'll do the right thing, I said earlier tonight that I believe that students do as well as the expectations of their teachers, we have high expectations of Boston Scientific, and I'm sure they're going to live up to all those expectations, so thank you very much.
Welcome. Counselor Finn and Counselor Gattro.
Thank you, Mr. President, very, and thank you, Mr. Zelinski, for being here this evening to make this presentation, and I'm very happy to hear that, making a representation about, again, opening it up specifically to those folks that do have collective bargaining agreements and the like, but, further question I would just have, is do you presently have any type of memorandum of understanding with the trades?
We do not, we just had our initial conversation this evening, I met with one of the trade representatives this evening.
Do, but you continue to have those discussions, perhaps to reach some type of memorandum of understanding-
Yes, we will.
-moving forward, through you, Mr. President, perhaps, are there any representative, I noticed Mr. Brett's here, are there any representative of the trades here who are willing to speak this evening?
I was actually going to go through the process, and I was going to ask Mr. Brett to come up and speak as well, but if you wish him to come up at this point, that's fine as well, Mr. Brett?
Good evening, counselors, Mr. President, once again, my condolences, see your family, I want to thank Counselor McNamee, the council, and the city for their continued concern for, you know, good-paying jobs and, and good employers in the city, we did meet with Mr. Zelinski, and he's, you know, made the commitment that, that we will have a successful job down there, I think by the nature of what you heard through their application, at the end, they probably had put an additional, you know, maybe five full-time jobs, it's a very technical robotic warehouse, which I believe they're going to develop a lot of unused portion of that building, and hopefully, you know, ensure its roots in this city for a long time to come, you know, for us in the building trades, our unemployment rates are anywhere from 30 to 50%, and we are thankful for every job that we can get, and every, every good company that comes along that will employ members, and we look forward to a successful project, and once again, I want to thank the council for their concern on behalf of my members and the members of the South Shore Building Trades.
Counselor? And I want to thank Mr. Brett for the important advocacy that the trades do, but I do have one question, I want to make certain, and it sounds based by what you're saying, that you have a positive view of this, so essentially, even though there is no particularly, no memorandum of understanding per se that's set there, you have no problem with us moving on this this evening and moving this forward?
That's correct, counselor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brett, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor, thank you, Mr. Brett, very much. Counselor Gattro, and then Counselor LaFrost.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a few comments, number one, I, my personal opinion is Boston Scientific has been an important corporate partner in the city of Quincy for the past 13 years, and grateful for their presence and their commitment to the city, and for the jobs that they proposed, and those that they've retained, and for the employment for the people that live in the city of Quincy, I'd just like to commend the mayor and the administration, I think they worked out what is a good agreement that protects the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, so that we're not seeing any reduction, and if anything, we see an increase in a half a million per year in new tax revenue, I think the capital investment, the numbers that were talked about, the 30 million in capital improvements, I don't have a recollection of a number that high for an individual piece of property in some time coming before the city council, I concur with my colleagues on the commitment to labor, I think it's universal around this, this body, that we have a large pool of talented folks in our local trades, and that if there's going to be an investment of this type in our city that's going to be a part of a tax incremental financing package, then by all means, we want to, we want as many assurances as possible that local qualified folks that are here in the city of Quincy awaiting the opportunity to contribute and work, get the first opportunity to do so, so I appreciate the words from the representative of Boston Scientific, as well as that of Mr. Brett, that there are hopeful signs that we'll see some relief for jobs in the construction side, I did have one question with respect to the construction of the property, and I'm not sure who to pose that to, the gentleman perhaps?
Mr. Zornsky?
Mr. Zelinski, the, the, over the last year, I had the opportunity actually to, to traverse the 27 miles of Quincy coastline, which included along the border of your property, I had never been out there in the past before, and the vistas are extraordinary as they are as you continue around Marina Bay and out into Squanum and so forth, there is a move afoot in the planning process, and there's money in the Community Preservation Act from our city, to explore the prospect of a riverwalk along the Ponson River, and you have a very vital location that obviously allows the public to traverse to and from along your shores, but that being said, my recollection is it's separated by a chain-link fence, there's a lot of trash, and there's no real monitoring of the area, so I wondered if the improvements that are being done to the property extend to the fence line, to the, to the boundaries, to the parking lot, and if Boston Scientific would at least, if no improvements or changes or modifications are going to be done, hopefully not to restrict access, but if Boston Scientific would be open to cooperate with the Ward Counselor and the Quincy Environmental Network as they move ahead on that project, because unlike the west coast, where there, there is no private ownership of the coastline, it's all public ownership, here in Massachusetts and many places in the east, we don't have that luxury, and so we're grateful that you've allowed us that, and perhaps that was written into the original agreement, dating back to when it was Jordan's Warehouse, or maybe under your TIF, but that's an extraordinary public access opportunity along that area, and although it's not written in stone in this TIF agreement, I'd just like to give you the opportunity to speak to the folks that are watching at home tonight, many that live in that area, about Boston Scientific and their plans for the coastal access point, which is an extraordinary benefit for your employees, I imagine that walk the area at lunchtime, as well as the public as a whole.
So we have not addressed them specifically, nor had meetings with the appropriate groups, but would certainly be open to meeting with them, and under the Ward Six Counselors, with discussion with him, would be, would be willing to sit down and discuss that with the groups, yes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor LaFrost.
Thank you, through, Mr. President, while I haven't walked the 27 miles of coastline, I have been aboard the boats multiple times on 27 miles of coastline, and just recently up in the Ponson River aboard the Quincy Police Marine Unit for our coastal spill planning, and I, while the vista's beautiful looking out, it could use some aesthetic improvements looking in, so I just wanted to point that out, we are looking with these groups, that's something to factor in, I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues relative to the interest of working with organized labor in the area, too many of our constituents have been unemployed in long term, and this is a great project for the city of Quincy, I just have some questions, if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Pulio, I had requested some information from him in planning for tonight's meeting, and I just had some questions on that.
Mr. Pulio.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Pulio, Counselor Ramondi had asked that going forward, the TIF review would be done through the municipal finance office, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So in the original TIF agreement, it states that, I don't know what page, with letter F, "Boston Scientific Corp. shall provide the city with an annual report." And we had a lot of questions here tonight about the employment levels, the employment levels in the economic target area to their specifically Quincy residents, neighboring towns, and this is all information that's spelled out in the original TIF agreement that was requested. So as far as the oversight for the past, it states that the annual report be given to the city each July after the close of their fiscal year. Is that something that we have been receiving, and that for the future, it'll be managed through your office, or is that the mayor's office?
In the past, it has been done through the assessor's office. I was reviewing that file today. In fact, Counselor, to send you that, some of that information, and there were a number of those annual report letters in there. I didn't go through it and count to make sure it was every year, but it was a substantial number of annual reports present.
Thank you. And some of the questions I have on the spreadsheet that you had sent to me, we -- where we are looking to increase, well, question one, we're looking to increase the rate from 16% in for the final eight years of this TIF to 32%. So the, in column B, do you have that spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay. So fiscal year 10, which we are closing out, the Boston Scientific savings in column K is $60,318.
Correct.
For fiscal year 11, which is next year's budget that just passed, the Boston Scientific savings in column K is $330,789. So a $270,000 difference versus their savings versus our revenue collections?
It's also reflective of a $24 million investment, that projection.
I understand that, but I'm just thinking of how that's going to impact the fiscal year 11 budget, coming up $270,000 short in our revenue projections?
No, no, no. The, if you look at column J?
Yep.
That's the actual bill due.
Okay.
So even under this projection, I doubt that there would be $24 million of capital investment in fiscal year 2011. Let me say that to start.
Yeah.
But in the projection before you, even if we start in year one, or it starts in fiscal year 2013, the city will not lose a single dollar in tax revenue.
Okay, because it does have a $24 million jump in value for fiscal year 11, and I don't --
Correct, so under that --
Money's coming that fast.
It will not come that fast. One, second, if you look, the actual tax bill will go from $795,000 to $1.1 million. So it's a savings on the increase over what they already pay versus what they would otherwise pay without the presence of a TIF.
Okay. So secondly, in column E, we have the tax rate, and I just want clarification. So 27.45, even though we haven't certified it for fiscal year 11, is kind of, is that a placeholder, or is that a commitment that our commercial tax rate for this TIF will be 27.45 going forward for the next eight years, or is that a placeholder?
It's a placeholder.
Okay.
The commercial tax rate will be whatever it is for the rest of the city. TIF agreements do not freeze the tax rate for the participating corporation.
Okay. And this TIF agreement needs approval at the state at the Economic Assistant Coordinating Council, and my understanding is that meets quarterly. We have a June 30 scheduled meeting, September 28.
Correct.
What is this on the agenda for?
June 30.
It is June 30, so it's critical that this is passed this evening.
It is.
And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McValdern.
Thank you. I just want to say, in 1997, I was in a very different role at the time. I was the executive secretary, and at that time, Boston Scientific had come in to see myself on mayor sheets, and Richie Mead, who at the time was the director of planning, was local attorney Dave Mahoney. And the gentleman sitting in the audience, Bob, was with us at that original meeting, and they made certain representations to the city of Quincy about a piece of property that had been empty for about an eight or nine-year period as a Jordan Marsh Warehouse, and really, the city was not collecting, was collecting very little tax revenue on it, and the property was in deplorable condition. There were homeless people living there, and it was not very well taken care of. And Boston Scientific came in, and they did everything they said they were going to do, and also, they, you know, gave us an additional 150 jobs that we never anticipated, and, you know, made the warehouse very, very vibrant, and did a lot of work and upgrade work to come into Shea Boulevard that the city could not have afforded. I think what we have in front of us is a very fair agreement for the city of Quincy, and I also think it's going to enhance opposition because it's going to keep a very good company, an international company, in the city of Quincy for many, many years to come. So I will be supporting the agreement.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Pulio. I just wanted to make a couple of observations myself this evening on this matter. A couple of things that came to mind, you know, we've just been through an extremely difficult budgetary process. Waymouth, as we've noted in the newspapers, suffered some of the same difficulties that we have in terms of reductions in staff, reductions in revenue. Braintree, interestingly enough, survived probably to a much better degree than we did. One of the reasons why was new growth. Nordstrom's, for example, opening up at the South Shore Plaza. In fact, Mayor Joe Sullivan pointed to that new growth coming in as a saving grace for the town of Braintree. So it, obviously, it's critically important from this city's perspective to maintain good corporate citizens. We all know that commercial tax rates are higher than the residential property tax rates, and it's important to, that we offset the burden on the residential homeowner. So any time that we can keep a good corporate citizen here without sacrificing what we would be entitled to otherwise is obviously a good thing. One of my concerns, and we've talked about it tonight, and maybe, Mr. Zelinski, if I could just ask you a couple of questions. Can you speak in terms of any definitiveness with regard to the type of plant and site improvements that are going to take place prospectively over the forthcoming years as you expand and make this 20, at least guaranteed $20 million investment by 2013, $30 million in all? Can you talk in any specifics about what's going to happen to the building, or the site itself?
Sure. There are a number of components. The site has some storm mitigation measures that we'll undertake. We've always been concerned about a tidal surge in the river, so we will be taking some action on the west elevation of the building to protect against a tidal surge. The south portion of the building, which is basically about 60% finished, half of it has a, 40% of it has a dirt floor, we will be installing a new slab, all new mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems in the building, new roof, new sidewalls, new windows, some site work with some new truck docks on the south side of the building, and then there's some maintenance items that include the infrastructure to the site. We'll be doing some upgrades on the electrical service entry and the water entry for the sprinkler system.
Any sense, and I'm not holding you to a defined number, but any sense, given all of that, and you mentioned a lot of different areas as far as tradespeople, electrical, plumbing, roofing, siding, windows, all of that, covers a pretty wide gamut, any sense as to how many jobs during that period of construction may be created by this significant investment?
We estimate 400 to 550 construction jobs over the term of the construction.
Okay, that's pretty significant. Okay, thank you. And that's another issue that, you know, give a little kudos to Mr. Encarnasio and the Ledger. One of the things that I've followed with interest is their discussion about the $787 billion stimulus package, which has been taxpayer money. It's our money, it's our children's money, probably our grandchildren's money, and maybe great-great-grandchildren's money that we've spent in order to stimulate the economy. One of the downsides that I think in terms of that economic stimulus, and it's, I think it's been corroborated by the media reports, is there hasn't been a whole lot of job stimulation within the private sector. And even within the public sector, it's been repaving work, temporary jobs, you know, not a, you know, a high amount of jobs being created. Some of it's just been to sustain jobs. So whenever there's an opportunity to create jobs in the private sector, that's a good thing. Certainly, five additional jobs is good. Sustaining those jobs that are already there is important. But one of, I think probably the sector that has probably benefited the least from all of this has been the construction trades. So obviously, you know, putting four or 500 people to work for any period of time in the construction trades is really important, and I think you've heard the sentiments here amongst those sitting in this world tonight. Quite honestly, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for my father and my grandfather, who are both pipe covers. So, you know, have a particular personal commitment to organize labor and those in the trades who have built this country, and any time we can reduce their unemployment rate, which we've heard tonight is 30% to 50%, depending upon the trades, you know, makes a great deal of difference. And if we can make those jobs, local people here within the community, where I think our unemployment rate in the city right now, last time I looked, it was 9.6%. Anytime we can reduce the unemployment in our own city, that's also important. So pleased to hear that there's a meeting of the minds and a commitment going forward. I think that's significant to all of us. So thank you all for speaking here tonight, and I believe, you have a question, Counselor?
Yes, if I could, I just, I don't know, I've been able to review some of the, some of the additional materials. I just, I just had a couple of follow-up questions to Mr. Pulio, is he, if that'd be all right?
Sure.
Mr. President, thank you. What's the, what's the total, and I know you've said this a couple of times, I apologize. What's the total value of this TIF to Boston Scientific, or projected value, based on everything?
From fiscal years 1999 to 2010, the average was a savings, averaging all the years, is about $55,000 a year. Going forward with an additional $30 million in investment, the savings will be about in the range of $340,000 a year. So that's, that's the --
So what's the total? What's the total bottom-line figure?
I don't have it added up, but --
So it's about $3.3 million ballpark?
Ballpark.
All right. And the, the questions that Counselor Ramondi had asked about the personal property tax, you had said that, I'm sorry, yeah, the personal property is exempt, right?
Correct.
Now, would the additional $25 million of that Boston Scientific is going to invest moving forward, would that have already been exempt under the existing TIF?
Correct.
It would have?
Correct. The, I guess the rules of the game for the tax increment financing agreements are put forward by the state, so it spells out specifically in statute that personal property is exempt for all TIF agreements statewide.
So would it, regardless of when the investment is made in, in personal property, it's all exempt?
Correct.
Forward. Once you get the TIF, it's a free ride?
Correct.
Forward. Is that just during the duration of the TIF agreement, or?
Everything is only for the duration of the TIF agreement.
Okay, all right. And you were including the value, the personal property exemption value when you were giving us that number, right?
That's just real estate property.
So that's just real estate. So another $25 million moving forward, and I don't know what they have in the building now, that's, I would imagine, that's a significant savings as well to Boston Scientific.
Correct. That's one of the benefits of the TIF to the corporation. Our benefit is on the real estate side, and they have the benefit on both sides.
And do you know what the, what the value to Boston Scientific is of the personal property exemptions that they get through the TIF?
I do not. We know that they're, they're exempt from taxation, so we don't go through the process of actually putting them through valuation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I, just very briefly, I want to reiterate some of the things that have been said. I think, you know, it's important, for me anyways, I think for this, for this body and for the entire government, to try and do everything we can to make sure that Quincy residents are employed at buildings like this and on buildings like this when they're being built. So for this Counselor's money, that's, you know, that's what he's looking for. And I'd just like to say, you know, thank you to Boston Scientific for coming tonight, thank you, Mr. Pulio, for answering my questions, and I certainly wouldn't want to sit in a boardroom with Mr. Zelinski there. He's getting a $3 million tax break, and we can't even break a smile, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Don't play poker with him.
That means we twisted his arm enough.
Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. 440 permanent jobs, 400 to 550 good-paying construction jobs for our unemployed tradespeople. Local hiring on the construction jobs, a record of local hiring on the permanent jobs, good-paying permanent jobs as well. $30 million of wages pumped into the local economy, spent on the local economy. Within that $30 million, we also have goods and materials being purchased from local vendors wherever possible. We have $32 million in equipment being purchased and installed out there. I think this is a win situation for the city, it's a win situation for Boston Scientific, and I think it's a win situation for those people who will be permanently employed and employed during the construction process. Given that, I would move passage of the amendment to the tax increment financing agreement between the city of Quincy and Boston Scientific Corporation.
Counselor Keenan moves passage. Counselor Guttrow seconds, and Mr. Fatsis, I saw your hand up, wanted to make any comments?
I just, one, one point of clarification on 100 Hancock Street, because I don't want anybody at home to think that it is a empty building. Mass Financial Services has been in the building for a year now. They have two floors, they're fully occupied. Also, it escapes me the name of the other firm that occupies one other additional floor, and there is a contract signed for five additional floors to be taken by the state of Massachusetts. So it's a 10-floor building. We currently have three floors occupied with five more floors to be occupied by state agencies, and they're currently working on that, so, just as a point of clarification. I'd also like, on the mayor's behalf, to thank the Council for their due diligence on this project, and to suggest that the help of the Council has been important in this process, and the dialogue, I think, is, has been very, very clear and very, very concise, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fatsis. See, I noticed that they changed the occupancy sign on the building, where it used to say that there was 260,000 square feet that were unoccupied, now it's down to 26,000, so looks like they're making substantial progress towards occupying that building, which is a good thing. So on the motion of Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Guttrow, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFrost.
Yes.
Counselor McValdern.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in the affirmative, that matter has been approved. Thank you to all who spoke this evening on that, and now moving on to the next item.
Item number seven on the agenda. In accordance with the provision to Mass General law chapter 44, section 53E and a half, upon the request of the Park and Recreation Board, with the recommendation as honor of the mayor, the sum of $225,000 is the limit, which may be expended in fiscal year 2011, from the recreation revolving account established by Council Order 2009-124.
Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you recall, back in 2009, we established a revolving account for the Recreation Department for the programs that they offer. We established at that time a limit of $225,000 for purposes of that account. This is a requirement to do it on an annual basis. It is the same amount that we have done in the past. I would move passage of the order as presented.
Counselor Keenan moves passage, seconded by Counselor Guttrow. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFrost.
Yes.
Counselor McValdern.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine members voting through.
Nine having voted in the affirmative, that matter passes. Next item on the agenda?
Next item on the agenda, Mr. President, is items eight and nine. The items 2010, 170 were passed at last on the June 14 meeting. These were submission of a water and sewer budget in your absence later last week. It came to the attention of myself and the city auditor and Mr. Pulio that there was a transposition error, and we, Counselor Keenan suggested we put them back on the agenda. a transposition error, and we, Counselor Keenan suggested we put them back on the agenda, and they are back on the agenda.
Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things accomplished by the introduction of these matters. First, they are now in order form, whereas last meeting, we were working off a budget. Secondly, because of the way Muniz tabulated things, it did not correctly tabulate the bottom line. The individual numbers that were presented to us at the last meeting were correct, how they would be allocated and so forth. So, this is, these are two orders. One is the Sewer Enterprise Fund, which is Council Order 2010-170. It establishes the correct bottom line, which is consistent with the sublines that we reviewed at the last council meeting, the special council meeting. And so, given that, I would move passage of Council Order 2010-170 as it stands.
That your point of order?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would it be a better procedure to reconsider the action we took at the last meeting, have that motion passed to reconsider, and then substitute or amend that document with the document we have in front of us? My point of order would be if we vote for the matter tonight, then you have two orders that are both indicating the same thing. One would be in error, and the other one...
Reconsider and then make it...
So, my suggestion would be to have, we all voted in favor of it. Anyone can move to reconsider, take that positive vote. Now, the matter's before the council to be reconsidered, and then whether you want to substitute it or amend it, I would think that's a better process. And having two documents out there in successive meetings, that would be somewhat in conflict of each other.
I think your question is well put. I was thinking of a vote to rescind, but perhaps a vote to reconsider would be a more proper order.
That'd be fine. I'd move, then withdraw my prior motion, move that we reconsider Council Order 2010-170. So, we'd take a motion, a vote on the motion to reconsider, then we would reconsider by substituting this order.
Counselor Keenan offers a motion to reconsider, seconded by Counselor Ramondi on that motion. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
To reconsider Council Order 2010-170. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFawrest.
Yes.
Counselor McValan.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine to reconsider.
Nine having voted in the affirmative on the reconsideration. Now, a new motion has been offered.
I make the motion that we substitute the order that's before us this evening with a total in the Sewer Enterprise Fund of $20,483,250, that that be substituted as Council Order 2010-170, and that we move passage of the order as substituted.
Counselor Keenan moves passage of the substituted order 2010-170, seconded by Counselor Ramondi on the motion.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFawrest.
Yes.
Counselor McValan.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine having voted in the affirmative, that matter passes. On number nine, the next item on the agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move reconsideration of Council Order 2010-171, which is the Water Enterprise Fund budget that we considered at the last council meeting.
170A.
170A, I guess.
That's what we numbered at last, right? That's correct.
So, we'd be looking to reconsider this one?
Vote on Council Order 2010-170A, which is the Water Enterprise Fund account. The order that we have in our package is 171, but it is supposed to be 170A. Is that correct?
We realize our mistake.
Okay.
Counselor Keenan moves, and Counselor Ramondi seconds, a motion to reconsider 2010-17A.
170A, right.
On the motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
To reconsider 170A, which is the water portion. There's Counselor Finn. Counselor Guttrow. Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFawrest. Counselor McValan. Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine to zero to reconsider.
Nine having voted in the affirmative, the motion to reconsider passes. Now, we have a motion to...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would move that the order before us, Council Order 2010-170A, be substituted in place of the order that we passed at the last council meeting. This order shows Water Enterprise Fund budget in the amount of $14,438,636. I move passage of the order as substituted.
Counselor Keenan moves passage of a substituted 2000, Council Order 2010-170A, seconded by Counselor Ramondi.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFawrest.
Yes.
Counselor McValan.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Nine having voted in the affirmative, that matter passes. Any further items on the agenda?
Mr. President, I have several late items submitted to me. A few are gifts, if you choose to entertain them, and I have one or two other items also. I have a late item here, which is a gift. Be it a day in the City of Quincy, accept the following gift upon the conditions attached and herein set forth. Donor, Save the Harbor, Save the Bay gift, $3,750. It's for summer 2010 activities.
Take them one at a time?
I'd like to, Mr. President, if you...
Okay. Counselor Guttrow moves that we accept the gift, Save the Harbor, Save the Bay, of $3,750. And on the motion, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is on behalf of the Friends of Waltham Beach, and I just wanted to ask if the council could send a letter to Save the Harbor, Save the Bay. Patricia Foley is the executive director. I had the opportunity to go up there on Saturday with Kristen Awed-Lottis, excuse me, two weeks ago, for the official announcement. This is part of the Better Beaches campaign, where they've given out money to DCR Beaches to, for extensive programming, and the Friends of Waltham Beach has done a magnificent job allocating that money to a variety of different events. So, I wanted to congratulate the Friends on a successful application and thank Save the Harbor, Save the Bay for their continued commitment to summer programming here at Waltham Beach. Thank you.
I think we have a representative from there tonight.
No, we do.
From there tonight.
Dick Herbert is here, on behalf of the Friends of Waltham Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert, for your work and all of that of members of the group. Counselor, I know you've been intimately involved, and Counselor LaFawrest, your support as well.
Enthusiastically move acceptance, Mr. President.
Counselor Guttrow moves acceptance, seconded by Counselor LaFawrest on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFawrest.
Yes.
Counselor McValan.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
I have another gift here. Be it a day in the City of Quincy, accept the gift upon the conditions attached and herein set forth. Donor, various donors, gift $1,040 for the Dare camp.
Counselor McValan moves acceptance of the gifts, various gifts from various donors to the Dare, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor LaFawrest.
Yes.
Counselor McValan.
Yes.
Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine having voted in the affirmative. Nine having voted for the gift. Mr. President, I have no other late items. Plenty of things in the community, no communications.
Okay. So, we now move on to, oop, Counselor Ramondi.
The comment about no more late items, could we be refreshed on the new law that takes effect the next time we meet? Will there be any, quote, late items? What's the status of that matter?
I believe that the new regulations require that any matters that the chair can reasonably foresee that should be on the agenda should be on the agenda.
So, let's just take a look as a frame of reference. The matters that the clerk just referred to, gifts, things like that, would the opinion be that those are matters that you would anticipate being in front of the council and should be on the agenda, or not?
As I spoke earlier, Mrs. Halsner and I went to school a couple of weeks ago and extended a three-hour session just about the new open meeting law, which was passed this May and signed by the governor and promulgated, and it's supposed to start on July 1st. Last Thursday, Mayor Koch called a meeting of all department heads to discuss it. We went at a lengthy session, talking to department heads and various people about it. I don't think that it calls for the elimination of late items, but it's going to make it much more difficult to bring items in, and probably, under no conditions except emergency preamble, will you be able to bring an item in on the night of the election. If the clerk, or a councilor, or the mayor comes across an item after the agenda goes out on the Thursday before, we're supposed to send out an amended agenda and put it on that 24-hour board, which will be up for July 1st, and we've made the decision where it's going to be and how we're going to do it.
So, the next time we meet, I mean, if we do have a special meeting in the summer, that's clear, any item to be considered must be on the agenda on a special meeting?
Reasonably anticipated.
Well, let's assume that when we meet next in September, usually, if we make the request to the president and the mayor's office and the clerk get together, and there's an agenda meeting, and that item is on the agenda, can we still follow that guideline, Mr. President, that we need to get to you prior to that time? And then, if a matter comes up Thursday that we want to discuss on Monday, what happens with that? We still need the 24-hour notice, and Saturday, Sunday is no longer includeable within that 48 hours. So, when's the latest, if we had an item that we wanted to put on the agenda, and if it's not on the original agenda, when's the latest that we would have the opportunity to submit that to you?
I expect that we're still going to meet on the Wednesday before a council meeting, in the manner of which we're meeting, which is now later in the day on Wednesday. It's Mrs. Riden, the president, the mayor, myself, Susan, and certain members of the administration. That allows us to get the agenda out and published by 4:00 on Thursday, which we always have done, as far as getting it up by Thursday, which covers the 48 hours, and that eliminates Friday and Saturday.
Saturday, Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday. I'm sorry. You're correct, Counselor. But it spoke specifically if on Saturday, if on Friday or Monday morning, we get a late item, we are to put, if we anticipate it's going to be on there, we're to put an amended agenda out on the 24-hour board and notify everyone again of the amended agenda. I think, and we have to go through this once or twice...
Mr. President, if I could, by its very nature, if the agenda goes out on Thursday at 4:00, then it can't be a late item, because you don't have enough 24 hours between Friday and Monday to cover a change. In other words, if there's a change on Friday, it's too late, right?
That's correct.
That was my understanding, and I'm looking for...
That's correct. Again, emergencies, we have to run here a little with it to see how it goes, but I've asked, we have a clearinghouse in the Attorney General's office, ask these questions. The questions are piling up, because they're all new and hasn't been anticipated.
But I guess what I'm asking, would it be better for us to have this agenda meeting on Monday or Tuesday, to give the councils a chance to see the agenda that comes out and reflect upon whether we want to put something on? Right now, if you get the agenda, if it goes out at 4:00 on Thursday, and if you get it on Friday, or even if you come up here and get it, it'd be too late to add anything at that point. Whereas, if you back it up just a day and maybe get it on Wednesday, at least then you have Thursday morning, if a matter comes up that you really wanted to consider. It's just a thought, Mr. President, over the summary, you may want to reflect upon that. It just looks like with that timeframe, if the agenda goes out, if someone has a matter that we want to explore publicly, we would not be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor McValan.
On that same vein, relative to the new law, the new, currently on an agenda, we have items of motions, orders, and resolutions, which are not brought in with any, they're not on any agenda. Would those items now have to be on the agenda prior to them coming in, or can they still be introduced? So, if I'm bringing in an item the night of, you know, the meetings for, I'll say, a traffic change, does that traffic change now have to be part of the agenda meeting and be on the agenda if we're going to be speaking about it that evening?
Yes, and this is my understanding. Counselor Guttrow and I attended a...
I did also.
All right. So, my understanding from attending the educational program that Mass Municipal put on is that you should put out everything that you can reasonably anticipate you want to be, you know, considered by the body, and that would include any motions, orders, and resolutions.
If we're planning on bringing something out of committee that's already properly before the body, that's already on the calendar, so that's different.
That's different.
Even if we're planning on discussing it on that particular evening, it's already on the calendar.
Right. As long as it's in the calendar.
So, if we have items that we want to bring in for meeting, unlike, let's say, if the mayor, the administration wants to bring in, any items an individual council wants to be brought in, we'll have to meet the deadline to get into the office.
If you wanted to introduce a new ordinance, or, you know, petition, or, that's my understanding, that it should be prepared in advance and submitted and placed on the agenda. I know Counselor Guttrow, Counselor...
Thank you.
Did you, Counselor Guttrow, did you still wish to speak?
I did wish to speak. Everything that was said was accurate. The motions, orders, resolutions must go on the agenda starting on July 1st. That was the resolution, Mr. President, you and I introduced on April 5th, saying, let's get a jump on that open meeting law changes. LOL. Many other communities already do it. It's extraordinarily beneficial, I think, not just for the public, to know everything that we're taking unless it's of an emergency nature in advance. But I think it's also beneficial to us as members of the city council to anticipate, plan, do some research on some of the issues that our other colleagues are introducing in advance. So, I think it's a good thing to do. I also wanted to point out that the Mass Municipal Association does, I think it's a monthly or every two months, a magazine, and the topic this month is open meeting law. All of the Q and As are there, and it's the president or the chair of the City Solicitors' Association for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is the author of the article. I think he's out of Hingham, and it, all of the questions that we're talking about tonight, that we've talked about back in April, and that I'm sure that we'll contemplate over the course of the summer, are listed in there. It's probably a six, seven-page article, so I encourage my colleagues to look at it. So if we have items that we want to bring in for a meeting, unlike, let's say, if the Mayor, the administration wants to bring in items, and any items an individual council wants to be brought in, will have to meet the deadline to get into the office?
If you wanted to introduce a new ordinance or, you know, petition or, that's my understanding, that it should be prepared in advance and submitted and placed on the agenda. Counselor Gattro, Counselor...
Thank you.
Did you, Counselor Gattro, did you still wish to speak?
I did, I did wish to speak. Everything that was said was accurate. The motions, orders, resolutions must go on the agenda starting on July 1st. That was the resolution, Mr. President, you and I introduced on April 5th, saying, let's get a jump on that open meeting law changes. LOL, many other communities already do it. It's extraordinarily beneficial, I think, not just for the public to know everything that we're taking unless it's of an emergency nature in advance, but I think it's also beneficial to us as members of the City Council to anticipate, plan, do some research on some of the issues that our other colleagues are introducing in advance. So I think it's a good thing to do. I also wanted to point out that the Mass Municipal Association does, I think it's a monthly or every two months, a magazine, and the topic this month is open meeting law. All of the Q and A's are there, and it's the President or the Chair of the City Solicitors' Association for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is the author of the article. I think he's out of Hingham, and it, all of the questions that we're talking about tonight that we've talked about back in April, and that I'm sure that we'll contemplate over the course of the summer, are listed in there. It's probably a six, seven-page article, so I encourage my colleagues to look at it.
Counselor Ramondi.
Now, this would also apply for committee meetings that a public, of course, need to be advertised. An awful lot of times, there may be one or two matters that the Chair wants to highlight, and then at the bottom, there's a little grab-all that says, and any other business that may come before, or any other business that are in committee, or that is in committee. Am I to assume that that sentence will no longer be there, that we are not allowed as a committee member to review anything other than what has been legally advertised and posted even for committee meetings? So if the Chair of X committee wants to speak or have a debate on one or two items that are in committee, and if that lasts five minutes, another half an hour, we cannot do anything else that may be in committee.
That's my understanding. It has to be listed.
So perhaps the clerk of committees needs to redo those letters to make sure that any time there's a committee meeting that goes out, that sentence should not be there, so that if it's on the, quote, "agenda" even for a committee meeting, members are obligated to prepare on those one, two, three or four items, knowing that nothing else can be discussed before that particular occasion. Is that the understanding?
That's my understanding. Counselor Finn.
You know, I would just like to go on the record as noting that I do not believe this is the greatest thing since soft ice cream by any stretch of the imagination, and I think the ludicrousness of it is in that very aspect, because here we are, we will have certain measures that we will have had to have introduced primarily into a council session, which will then become matter of a record, which is part of our calendar presently, which will then have to re-notify again in relation to committees, as opposed to having the business within those committees that are already a matter of record, so to speak. And I just think it's unfortunate, quite honestly, that it gets carried out to such a degree that actually makes the people's business, from my perspective, more difficult. And again, one we have to be obviously obligated to, but that whole point, I mean, why have this calendar? You know, why have it? And again, I just need to territorialize at that point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on this matter? If not, we can move on to...
I have another late item.
Another late item.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, with your indulgence of the council, I have another late item. It says, "Be it ordained that the city of Quincy turn over the duct and manhole system constructed by the city to lay underground utility-wise on McGrath Highway, as shown attached plant to National Grid, who will own and maintain the system." Commissioner Bruntaville is present to speak on this matter.
Mr. Commissioner, can you address this, please?
There's a representative here from National Grid also.
This is more of a procedural item. On Phase 3 of McGrath Highway, we, the city of Quincy, put the manholes in the duct bank in. At this point, we turn it over to National Grid. They pull the wires and, which will probably be 90 days, and once those nine, once everything's pulled and it's electrified, then they'll start the process of removing the poles.
Any questions of the Commissioner on this matter? Seeing none.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes.
Thank you.
We are now on to communications and reports from the Mayor and other city officers and city boards. Do you have any communications, Mr. Clerk?
I have no communications. In the future, they'll all be listed, though.
That's true.
That's correct.
Okay. Reports of committees. Counselor Finn, do you have a couple of public hearings?
Thank you, Mr. President. First order, 2010-143, petition from Mass Electric to install two 4-inch conduits from manhole 10250 to pole number 20 on Hancock Street, part of Hancock Street Bridge repairs, part of a public hearing held earlier this evening. Bring it out with a positive recommendation.
Counselor Finn moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-143, seconded by Counselor McNamee. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine members.
Nine members having voted in affirmative, that matter passes.
And Order Number 2010-144, similar, a joint petition from Verizon and Mass Electric to install one new pole on Hancock Street, approximately 44 streets, 44 feet south of existing pole 20, part of the Hancock Street Bridge Replacement Project being done by Mass DOT. Bring out a committee with a positive recommendation.
Counselor Finn moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-144, seconded once again by Counselor McNamee. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Any further business from your committee, Counselor?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing none. Further reports of committees? Counselor Gattro?
Thank you. This President's just battling the wind here. From the Ordinance Committee, Council Order 2010-172, introduced by myself to delete a handicap parking sign at 26 Euclid Avenue. The original order was 204309. This was approved by traffic. I move a positive recommendation.
Counselor Gattro moves a positive recommendation on 2010-172, seconded by Counselor McFaulin. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Counselor Gattro?
Council Order Number 2010-173, again, introduced by myself to install two-hour parking on the north side of Standishav from 30 feet east of Merrill, across from Warren Avenue, in front of 72 Standishav. This was approved by traffic. I move a positive recommendation.
Counselor Gattro moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-173, seconded by Counselor Finn. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Counselor Gattro?
Council Order 2010-174, from Counselor Palmucci, to delete and no parking anytime, sign on both sides of Loring Street, from Hayden Street to 192 feet north of Hayden Street. This was approved by traffic. I move a positive recommendation.
Counselor Gattro moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-174, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Counselor Gattro?
Council Order 2010-175, introduced by Counsel Palmucci, to install no parking anytime in the east side of Loring Street from Hayden Street to 42 feet north of Hayden Street, and on the south side of Hayden Street from 185 feet west of Loring Street to 50 feet east of Loring Street. This was approved by traffic. I move a positive recommendation.
Counselor Gattro moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-175, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Counselor Gattro?
Council Order 2010-177, introduced by Counselor McNamee to install one-hour parking, 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, Monday through Friday, at the Vane Street parking lot. This was approved by traffic. I move a positive recommendation.
Counselor Gattro moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-177, seconded by Counselor McNamee. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Counselor Gattro?
Council Order 2010-177, introduced by Counselor McNamee to install one-hour parking, 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, Monday through Friday, at the Vane Street parking lot. This was approved by traffic. I move a positive recommendation.
Counselor Gattro moves a positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-177, seconded by Counselor McNamee. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin. Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine having voted in affirmative, that matter passes. Any further items from the Ordinance Committee?
Mr. President, we did have an ordinance committee meeting on the 19th of May. We dealt with noise and blight, and I believe we took up the Responsible Employer Ordinance. And Responsible Employer Ordinance is 2010-152, and we have before us, I understand, some changes that were made through you. I would defer to Counsel Palmucci, who might have some update on what's transpired since last ordinance committee.
Is that it?
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes, it's my understanding that the, I had made some amendments to what I believe the Mayor had introduced a couple of meetings ago, and I believe that those, the amendments that were passed, I don't know, were we at the full council or an ordinance hearing? Were we at an ordinance committee hearing? I believe the amendments that that body had passed have been incorporated in what's before the council now. So I believe that this is the full intent of the ordinance committee, and I defer to Counsel Gattro as to how to proceed on that matter.
Counselor?
I suppose through you to the Mayor's representative, do you believe, Mr. Fatsis, that this is precisely what the Mayor wants moved based on the amendments? And so I'm happy to move action if Counselor Palmucci and the Mayor's office want to move some action on it.
The Mayor's office feels it's consistent with the intent of the order.
Thank you. So with that, Mr. President, I move a positive recommendation. I believe it's Council Order 152, 2010-152, as amended the Responsible Employer Ordinance.
Counselor Gattro moves positive recommendation on Council Order Number 2010-152, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. Any discussion on motion? Counselor Finn?
Forgive me, and I know I missed one meeting per se, but what is, is there substantively what was different that changed in relation to what we're passing at this point? Through you, Mr., I'm sorry, through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Palmucci.
What's before us is, at the ordinance committee meeting, the Mayor, we were discussing the Mayor's Responsible Employer proposed changes to the Responsible Employer Ordinance, and I had given the councillors some of my proposed amendments to that on another piece of paper.
So this is an integration of that?
This is an integration, and we voted on those amendments.
Correct, correct, okay.
And this is simply codifying those amendments. This is just putting the things that we voted for into the language.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin.
Yes. Nine having...
Nine to nothing.
Nine having voted in affirmative.
As amended.
We now have an amended Responsible Employer Ordinance. Good work to everyone involved. Back to you, Counselor.
One final issue, Council Order 2010-154. This was originally proposed by Mayor Koch, and it was an item that we had a public hearing earlier tonight, which is commonly referred to as the Stretch Code to Create More Energy-Efficient, More Energy-Efficient Building Code. We had a public hearing this evening. Mr. President, we had, I think, three folks that actually spoke. All were in favor. There was some testimony about emails or letters that came into ward councils in support of it. This was the subject of a June 8th ordinance committee meeting at, which we went through it, and I think most, if not all, of the councils were there and had opportunity to discuss it. I know that Mr. Walker is here on behalf of the Mayor and is going to walk through sequentially what our schedule is. I think he's asking for us to hold a vote, even though there are some compelling reasons why we would want to move forward now, but he's asking us to hold it briefly, and I wanted to defer to him to explain.
Mr. Walker?
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Counselor Coughlin. Essentially, we think we've had a couple of good meetings with this body on this initiative. We really want to do the Belts and Suspenders Routine and do a bit of a public education process over the next month or so, get some buy-in from the building community, get some buy-in from some folks who aren't necessarily bought in to this at this point. We don't think the disadvantages of waiting until the special meeting in August to take the vote outweigh the need for a real full vetting of this beyond just a deliberation at this party. There are some questions that need to be answered. There are some folks out there who do have some concerns about it. We just want to take the appropriate amount of time to make sure those questions are answered to the best of our ability. That being said, as Counselor Gattro mentioned, the Mayor's name is on this order, so he does support it. So going forward, that is still the case, but we, again, you know, over the next month or so, we do want to have a little bit more of a public education process.
So, Mr. President, in discussions with Mr. Walker, here's my preference. I mean, one, my preference would have been to move it now and to have these take effect in six months, but in deference to the Mayor, we will do that. I think the other compelling deadline was with respect to funding in the Green Communities Act, and I'd hate to see the city lose out or drop down. Mr. Walker indicated that he felt that should we have a special council meeting in August, that he would support having this actually on the special council meeting agenda, and that all of the public outreach or additional information that he feels he needs to do between now and then could be accommodated so that we could get this actually voted on, up or down by the council by that date, with your consent, Mr. President.
In terms of the availability of special, the grant funding offered by the Commonwealth, is there a drop-dead date that needs to, you know, take place in terms of the vote?
There is not. As the gentleman from the state mentioned this evening, if we get this done by the fall, we should be in line to be able to qualify for the next round of Green Communities funding. And, you know, this is not the only thing we need to do for Green Communities funding. We're making, and frankly, thanks to a lot of work of this body with the Wind Ordinance, some other initiatives, we've been able to do the last two years. We're getting there, but we're not at the Green Communities level at this point.
Okay. So, as I said, I'll defer to Mr. Walker. I mean, he wants to do additional outreach, and I feel like we obviously have had a public hearing. We had the opportunity for the public to come up and testify before us. We had a committee meeting, which, of course, was televised. This has been in the local media. It's been talked about at Quincy Environmental Network forums in the past. In my judgment, it's not anything new, would be, I think, the 45th or 46th community that if we chose to adopt it would do so. But again, I'll defer to Mr. Walker and hope that we can get that on with your help, Mr. President, through August agenda.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate your comments as well. Appreciate everyone's work on this. I mean, I just, I hope we can move forward on this sooner rather than later. Obviously, you know, from my perspective, if there's been, if there's been anything in terms of, you know, the poster child for the need for us to take a hard look at our national energy policy, it's been, you know, the ongoing, you know, disaster in the Gulf. So anything we can do to bolster efficiency in economies, I think environmentally, we ought to move forward as quickly as we can. Counselor Finn?
Thank you, Mr. President, but I just want to be clear that, from what I heard this evening, this does exclude us from one particular funding round, correct?
What?
As I understood it, and I know Counselor Gattro has left, but our not acting before July 1st does prevent us from the next funding round, correct?
That's why I asked the question.
No, it does not.
Well, perhaps I'm confused through you to Mr. Gatt, or to Counselor Gattro. I thought the testimony that the gentleman presented this evening said that if we do not act by July, if it's not enacted by July 1st, given the amount of time that has to pass, that in reality, that we would miss the next funding round.
Through you, Mr. President. Counselor Finn, Mr. Finn Lason indicated that, and I questioned him closely on this, that if we miss, if we did not act before July 1st, what that would do would knock forward by a six-month window the effective date of the regulations. So instead of being effective on January 1st of 2011, it would be July of 2011, or, excuse me, from July 2011 to January 2012. It did not necessarily negate us from this round of funding. It was indicated that there are two rounds of funding every year. The next round is this fall, and that if we acted by August, we would still have that opportunity, or by the fall. I think he said October. It sounded to me as if October was a decision timeframe, so I don't want to run the risk of bleeding into the fall. So instead of being effective on January 1st of 2011, it would be July of 2011, or, excuse me, from July 2011 to January 2012. It did not necessarily negate us from this round of funding. It was indicated that there are two rounds of funding every year. The next round is this fall, and that if we acted by August, we would still have that opportunity, or by the fall. I think he said October. It sounded to me as if October was a decision timeframe, so I don't want to run the risk of bleeding into the fall if we're going to have a special council meeting and if Mr. Walker indicates that we can do the public outreach that he feels would be necessary between now and then, that would be terrific. And I feel fairly confident that if we acted upon it, we wouldn't necessarily be at a disadvantage.
Understanding that this is only one condition in terms of, I understand.
It is.
But in terms of that, perhaps a little bit of some precision from Mr. Walker, in terms of where the public education, you said "some folks," it seems to me, given the fact that this is the mayor's legislation, he brought it forward, that he is presently taking a different look. I mean, who does "some folks" include?
Counselor, it really runs the spectrum of folks within the city. We have some people in the building community who have expressed some questions, some people in the residential community who have raised some questions, some folks in the commercial development community who have raised some questions. And again, you know, we've been reaching out to a pretty good degree, but we think that, you know, taking another month or so to have some workshops, to have some further discussion about it, isn't going to be the end game here.
I'm just, I'm interested because I don't know, and perhaps some of the other counselors have, I have not received that much other than positive feedback in relation to it. So I guess I'm a little disturbed by the level of specificity here this evening in terms of who the "some folks," is it the small building construction interests?
There are people in the small building construction interests and the large building construction interests. It's really been several different areas that have contacted us, that have reached out and said, "We really need to do a little bit more due diligence on it." That's all.
So in relation to the due diligence, I mean, and again, the mayor has indicated that he continues to support this, but it seems to me from the testimony that we've received, there's not a lot of room for a lot of, I mean, it is pretty much what it is. So I guess, is there any sense that the mayor is going to move away from this?
No.
So what is it that he hopes to be able to resolve or change, particularly if some people have strong opinions that this is somehow counter to their industry?
Again, Counselor, I think it's an education and a buy-in process. I think we'd like to be able to have the opportunity to educate and get some additional buy-in to this, especially considering, you know, the economic times are in. There is an argument out there that we shouldn't, at this point, be doing anything that's going to be causing anyone any additional trouble in new construction or new development or anything like that. Now, once you make the argument about this, it becomes clear to people that this is not something that's going to really cost any additional money in the end. But again, we want to take that step to make sure everybody understands what this legislation will mean.
So I'm kind of interesting because, interested in this as well, because it was interesting to me that some of these specific folks, or some folks here in terms of this is that, given the fact that there were public meetings held on it, I don't recall too many people coming to articulate those.
They did not.
So this is after that effect that the mayor, it's after it that the people have weighed in in relation to this?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if this is such a serious thing, is there some need to hold some other, I mean, additional public hearings in relation to it so this body has some sense as to what those issues or concerns might be?
That would be this body's, at this body's discretion. I think that, from our perspective, from the policy perspective, I think we're going to hold some public meetings within the administrative level, get the word out on those publicly, and we think those are going to be able to answer some of those questions.
Do you anticipate coming back here in some ways? Do you see that there's some room for any type of amendment within the so-called Stretch Code based on what's defined by state law or whatever? I mean, do you see that?
No, there's not, no.
Okay, well, again, I assume this will be on that specific agenda, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Due to the new open meeting law, it will be specified.
Well, I mean, I think, it's just one of these things. I think that it's just kind of interesting to me because, as I said, I have not received a ton of feedback. I don't know if other counselors have, per se, but I certainly know that there was a process, and we've had a public hearing this evening, and those interests, I think it would have been well-advised for the mayor to suggest that they come up here and articulate what those issues and concerns are. And so now what I'm hearing through the chief executive's office is that there's significant aspects of the community, residential, small development, construction development, larger construction development, people have some very serious issues or concerns, and we've already had the public hearing. So I mean, I just, it's just one of these little things in terms of, that you have to ask yourself, what's the purpose of this body? You know, in terms of passing these things and moving these things? If this is something that the mayor has to go and wrangle himself, that's disturbing to me. It's unfortunate. So if it's something that he has to sell, I mean, it would have been great to have some of those interests before us this evening to express what their issues and their shortcomings might be. But with that, as in the words of Bill Belichick, "It is what it is."
It is what it is.
So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
Well, true.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, Counselor. I mean, I haven't heard any opposition from anyone. The only folks that I've heard from have been positive in support of it, so. And I did, I did my own research in terms of seeing what communities, you know, recently have done. I know Winchester turned it down at a town meeting, but quite honestly, there was a developer, a very large residential developer who was threatening to pull the development because of some additional costs that were going to be incurred in the process. I think there was a 64-units development and additional cost. I forget what it was, but, you know, with the threat of that developer pulling out and some substantial losses to the town of Winchester, they opted not to support it. But on the other hand, there's been 40-plus communities, I think since the beginning of this year, that have voted to move forward with it. So, as I said, I was ready to vote to support it tonight, so. But we'll move on. So, any further business from the ordinance committee, Counselor? That's it? Okay. From finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have in finance committee, Council Order 2010-167, and we received this evening, Council Order 2010-167A. This is the Community Preservation Committee Recommendations relative to appropriation for several enumerated purposes. So what I would do at this point is to move that we, to request that we remove from committee Council Order 2010-167, place it before the city council.
Counselor Keenan moves that we remove 2010-167A from committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it.
And then, if I could ask Mr. Puleo to come up to give us an explanation. You, if you look in your documents from prior meetings, I believe it was June 7th, that we got in a council order in the sum of $850,631, and this order is broken up in a different way. So what I'm going to ask, going to ask Mr. Puleo to do is provide an explanation as to the differences between the order that was originally introduced and this proposed Council Order 2010-167A. If I may, Mr. President.
Mr. Puleo?
Thank you, Counselor. The main difference is the Community Preservation Act funding is broken up into a number of different categories. One is the unreserved account. There's affordable housing, historic preservation, park improvements, and open space. Each of those accounts has its own designated fund. So when we originally received the letter from the Community Preservation Council, they directed that funds be expended for certain purposes. However, the purposes didn't align exactly with the balances of each of those accounts. So we are, we're not changing the purposes, we're not changing the items that were approved by the Community Preservation Council. We're just ensuring that we are not creating liabilities in any of those funds that we don't have the cash to back it up with. So what this does is just change the accounts that those items are charged to. In addition, there was one item, which is $50,000 for the Bates property that was approved by the committee that had not previously come before the council. We wanted to get that on the order tonight to make sure that that didn't get left, that that wasn't omitted from a previous letter from the CPC. And then, in addition, there were, there was one item on the original letter that had already been completed at the start of the fiscal year, one transaction that had already come before the council that we took off the order, which was the $165,000 for affordable housing. And then the other item, which was the offset for the fiscal year 2011 budget, we took that out of the order and put it on hold to the fall.
Thank you. If I may, so walking through subsection A, Historic Preservation Projects, there's no change between the June 7th order and the order that's before this evening, is that correct?
I believe so.
Subsection B, the new order, park improvements, total 15, three, that is the same as subsection B of the prior order, is that correct?
I believe so.
And then going to D, there was a D under the prior order for $2,300 for bicycle racks. That was included in what is now B.
Correct.
It was twice listed in the prior one.
Correct.
Now, that's corrected. And then the 168, 531, that was under the prior order, subsection E, that is deleted from the present order because that had been previously addressed.
Correct. That was, that was a transaction that was approved by the council in the fall.
Right. And the $60,000, which was under subsection F of the prior order, that is removed from the new order because that's going to be addressed in the fall.
Correct.
And so that, and then going to the new order now, it does have the $15,000 for Butler's Pawn, which is consistent with the prior C, and it has $50,000 for the Bates. So that's where the...
Those are the main differences.
Those are the main differences. And given that, I would move past, first of all, I guess I would move substitution of Council Order 2010-167 with Council Order 2010-167A.
Counselor Keenan moves substitution of 2010-167 with a revised 2010-167A, seconded by Counselor Finn. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call it all.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow?
Run the motion. Yes, Counselor.
Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Puleo. A couple of questions, Nick. Bates property, where is that located?
I don't know the location of the property.
Point of order, state your point of order.
Just out of curiosity, was that, did he state a point of order? It sounds like we're back to discussing the motion, or...
There was a motion to substitute and a second, Mr. President.
I think he's just, he's on the motion.
Maybe procedurally, what we could do is pass the substitution, and then, when I make the motion, then anybody can discuss on the motion. So procedurally, that will make this...
That's fine.
No objection.
We'll approach it in a cleaner manner. Counselor Keenan moves substitution of 2010-167A for 2010-167, seconded by Counselor Finn. On that motion for substitution, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow? Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Forrest? Counselor McFaulen? Counselor McNamee?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci? Counselor Ramondi?
Yes.
President Coughlin? Two substitute, nine to zero.
Yes, nine to zero on substitution of 2010-167A for 2010-167. Counselor Keenan?
I move passage of the order as substituted.
Counselor Keenan moves passage of 2010-167A as revised and substituted for 2010-167, seconded by Counselor Finn. On the motion, Counselor Guttrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Puleo. The location of the Bates property.
Do you know the location, Mr. Puleo? If not, if I can find an answer for you.
I am unaware and would add that I would barely make it home at the end of the night without my GPS, so.
Mr. Clerk, do you have the answer to that question?
The Bates property, as I understand it, is off of Quincy Ave. It has no frontage. In other words, it's behind a parcel, it's landlocked to the left of the Can Man property in the rear of Quincy Avenue.
So, through you, Mr. President, to the solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor. We have a question from Counselor Guttrow with regards to the Bates property.
Mr. Solicitor, am I mixing apples and oranges, or is this the property that we were seeking to rezone and we were waiting for an agreement? And the last time we asked, you know, was the agreement signed? And you said, "Well, it hasn't been signed yet." And we said, "Well, should we rezone it?" And you said, "Well, we should probably wait till both sides do it, and then there would be a payment." Is that this property? I'm looking, actually, in the council calendar, and ironically, it doesn't seem, it seems to disappear, the precise location of that. But you know the property I'm speaking of?
If it's the Bates parcel, then that's the parcel that we've done the work on, yes. I don't think there's been a closing and a sale of the property to the city yet, but I do know that I ordered a title, title exam, I reviewed the title exam, and we've approved the title. So the, you know, the closing is, if it has not already happened, is going to happen forthwith.
I think it's important to know, is this the same parcel? And if it's appropriate for this body to appropriate funding for the acquisition, would it not be appropriate for this body to move forward on the rezoning? And if the answer is yes to both, is it, does that mean that everything's been signed, sealed, and delivered and sent back to the city? That, the issue that we talked about before? I'm asking the solicitor.
Is that, is that a question?
It is, Mr. Solicitor.
I mean, the property's ready to go. We've done our title exam, and it's outside of my, you know, not jurisdiction, but I'm not handling the matter directly because it involves the community preservation funds. But I do know that the attorney involved in the matter has consulted with me, and we've, we've approved the title. So there has not been a closing, but there is a signed P and S. There will be a closing because the title's been approved and accepted. So it's a matter of timing, and I guess it's up to the body how you want to handle it, if you want to proceed and rezone and handle the other things.
No, this is, yeah, my question through you, Mr. President, to you, Mr. Solicitor, is, is this one and the same property? That there was a petition before the council that was turned down last year to rezone the property because there wasn't consent from the seller? And now it's before us again to rezone it, open space? And, and we were holding off, I believe it was at your recommendation, Mr. Solicitor, until everything was signed off on. Is this one and the same properties?
Well, it's the same property, yes.
There we go.
That's what I'm indicating. I don't know that I agree with, like, a characterization of what I said earlier. I just, I've been asked questions about it before, and at, the last time that I recall speaking about this, I had ordered a title exam, but had not received it back and had not reviewed it.
So you're comfortable with the council voting to appropriate the money, but not necessarily rezone? Is that...
No, I think that, I mean, it's, the deal is going to happen now because we have the title exam. I just don't know quite whether it's happened or not, or what the scheduling of it is. So if, I mean, the council can rezone property at any time, obviously, as long as it's properly advertised. The fact of the matter is, the prior owner is the one who would be impacted if, for some reason, this deal fell through, and that's not going to happen now at this juncture.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Mr., I still have the floor, correct? The, just a couple of other questions relative to, not related to the Bates property, but relative to the appropriation before us. Mr. Puleo, the, someone reached out to me and suggested that there was an appropriation in CPA money for the restoration of the council chamber. I don't see that here. Do you have any knowledge of that? I mean, I see $75,000 for the City of Quincy for repairs to the basement of Old City Hall. Is there someone that can speak to that? Perhaps it's Mr. Shea?
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. President, Counselor Guttrow. In my conversations with the mayor this year at budget time, we did not talk about the council chamber. We've had extensive conversations, and they're ongoing, about the rest of this building now. I think we're going to start in the basement, hopefully, and that, I believe this $75,000 is money to get a project started to repair Old City Hall, which I think eventually includes this chamber, but I didn't have any specific conversations because when you look at this building in total, the chamber's probably the best portion of it because it was, as you know, done over 1997, and nothing else has been for years.
When someone suggested it was the chamber, I thought the chamber looked terrific, so I...
That's, that's correct. I don't think there's any money in here for the chamber.
So, can you or anyone speak to the specific proposal, what the $75,000 is going to be used for in the basement? Is it, is it for archives? Is it structural repairs? Is it to stop leaks? What is it for? And I assume that it's admissible under the Historic Preservation Project. And I assume that it's admissible under the historic preservation piece, correct?
Correct. And I believe it's an initial portion of money to hire architects and/or engineers and others to get recommendation about what to do with this building in total.
It says the basement. Repairs to the basement.
I believe, I believe the nature of the water in the basement and how it's affecting the...
Stability.
The equipment down there that has to be moved out because it's getting moist, particularly the election equipment and/or the heating system, that it's the mayor's intention to start sooner rather than later in the basement.
I understand.
If he doesn't accomplish the whole makeover, and these are my words, not his, he's got to do the basement, Counselor. That's what I believe the $75,000 is.
So it's engineering designs for water infiltration? Is that what you're saying?
I believe they're going to start with some expert telling them what needs to be done.
Got it. And thank you, Mr. Clerk. And then the last question, Ms. Pulio. The, and I presume that we'll see this in next year's budget because you can't go back. The allocation of money for, I think it was 60 or $65,000 that came up during the budget cycle, that for the first time, we're taking advantage of what I think folks are saying is an eligible expense based on municipal staff time for the community preservation administration. That was all listed as being part of the mayor's office, but I think the discussion suggested that that money really should be allocated across the budget. Some of it in the solicitor's office, some of it perhaps in the mayor's office, some in a variety of different places. Has that changed? Did you have that breakdown that you were going to get to us subsequently on that?
If you look at the expenditures within the most commonly used, you know, there's a number of departments that are really service departments for the rest of the city. So if you look at IT, purchasing, municipal finance, and the mayor's office, as well as the solicitor's office, I think those five basically at some level serve each and every department and each and every program that the city has and are each involved in some way. If you look at the budgets of those five departments, the $60,000 is about 1.75% of the combined budget of those departments. So it's about, you know, 1.75% of the service-oriented department's budgets is the $60,000, which I think is well within the guidelines of, or well under, any full cost allocation plan we might conduct.
No, I wasn't necessarily objecting to the amount, just where...
That was our analysis, was 1.75% of the time of those departments.
I think the only question was where it appeared in the budget. It looked like it was funding one staff position in the mayor's office, and maybe that's...
That's where we put the offset. In future years, we could very well take it as general revenue.
Or you could just allocate it equally.
Correct.
You know, a tenth or two tenths of an FTE.
Correct. It was strictly a structural decision we made. It didn't really, it's all money in the same pot in the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Finn, and then Counselor Palmucci.
Very quickly, because I'd just be interested in that. So if I'm understanding you correctly, there is no community preservation czar, as a recent newspaper article indicated. Is that accurate?
There will be no appointment of any czar of any type. I don't know exactly what the, I'm not sure where that came from. We currently have a staff member...
You did see the article, though, right?
And I believe it's more the headline than the article. I think the article was accurate. I think that the headline was extraordinarily misleading. And so I would say that there's one position that's going to be focused on moving, helping these organizations and helping these projects move forward. You know, the compliance issue that Counselor Guttrow raised, making sure that all the compliance boxes are checked off. So one of the positions that already exists there, the focus of that position is going to shift as someone who facilitates the proper expenditure of these funds and make sure the projects move along. We are not hiring a czar.
Thank you, Ms. Pulio.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Palmucci?
I feel like it's Groundhog Day. Counselor Guttrow starts, Counselor Finn goes, and then I take over on this particular issue. Every time, it's even something related to the CPC is mentioned. We all, the three of us, get on this soapbox and we have the same, similar conversation with you, Mr. Pulio. I just have a question. I don't know if you can answer it. I do have a question for you, but I have a question regarding what Solicitor Timmons just said. When Counselor Guttrow asked about the Bates property and what was going on with the Bates property, Solicitor Timmons sends, he's not handling the matter because it's related to the CPC. Does that mean that there's another attorney in the mayor's office, in the solicitor's office, that's handling that? Because I thought that was the whole basis of the cost allocation, was that...
No, for land acquisition, as far as I can tell from their expenditures, for land acquisition, we have hired outside attorneys who are experts in land acquisition.
Okay. And then for other matters is when the solicitor's office would render opinions?
Correct.
How is the solicitor's office used in these matters, specifically with what's before us?
We utilize Mr. Timmons' depth and breadth of knowledge in any way we foreseeably can.
That was a fantastic answer. Is there any depth to that? Sure, it's like a, I won't say that. Is there any depth, so, other than his depth and breadth, I mean...
We, I mean, the solicitor's office, any of those purchases, the solicitor's office will certainly be used in the review of those purchases. Any questions that my office might have in terms of the legality of expenses, how things are going through, we'd certainly seek their opinions on those matters.
And I'm to understand there's no type of cost allocation related to this particular order, right, that your office is prepared?
Correct. Correct. The administrative costs are set annually. That transfer was made in the fall, so we'll do another one in the coming fall, and that's when the $60,000 will be accomplished.
But I would, I would think, and again, you know, this is your area of expertise, but I would think that you would use this upon which to base this particular expenditures, upon which to base what the cost allocation was for next year in order to request the monies that you did when you're trying to decide what monies are appropriate to, you know, to request out of the CPC for administrative functions.
In terms of accounting, the CPC projects are difficult to track because we have, at this point, three full years of commitments in terms of what projects are going to be funded with CPC funds, and we have the cash to match those commitments. However, not all the organizations have been spending the money once they have purchase orders, once they have agreements with the city. So part of why a new position or a position is being, is having a new focus in the mayor's office is to help these organizations move along their projects to make sure those funds are expended, so...
And that person would be the CPC czar?
That person would be a current employee in the mayor's office.
The new position you refer to would be the, wouldn't be the CPC czar?
Same position, new tasks.
Okay. When, so the answer is no, no cost allocation related to this particular ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. When we make the expenditure next year for CPC?
Correct.
Will we have an opportunity to vote for that $60,000 because it'll be coming out of CPC? Will there be an opportunity for this body to vote on that $60,000 expenditure?
You would have to go through this same process, yes.
So the $60,000 for the non-czar CPC czar, would that be in an order similar to this as we're voting tonight?
There's two, yes, there's two different types of orders that we see on CPC. The first order is the setup of the budgets for each of the different categories. That's where we would anticipate doing the $60,000. And then this is the second type of order you see that will list specific projects. So there will be something similar that you'll see in the fall that will have the $60,000 on it.
And we'll have an opportunity to vote on that?
Yes.
And, I'll save that question for the fall. Lastly, I just, I believe Counselor Ramondi's are representative to the CPC. I didn't, I didn't know, it's a $600,000 expenditure. I didn't know if you wanted to walk us through each one of these 12 projects and give us any detail. I don't know if you are prepared to do that tonight, or, no. No, that's, I mean, I leave it up to you. Just, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I mean, just for a point of reference, the first year out, it was Attorney Brian Conley who did the negotiation for the land acquisitions and did a wonderful job in terms of representing the Community Preservation Committee. I think Attorney John Amendolari was last year. I don't know if he's still maybe involved. I think he may be still doing it. But that's been pro forma as far as the work with the committee. No, they're not doing, it's not doing it pro bono. But in any event, Counselor Guttrow, and then Counselor Ramondi.
I just had one last comment. And, Nick, this predated you, and so don't take offense, take it as homework, but I'm going to support the Community Preservation Act because I think they're all terrific projects, and you have to be deferential to some extent to the group of volunteers that comprise the committee and the people because I think they do a good job screening everything. I'm not sure if it was three or four years ago now that there was a recommendation to begin the appraisal process and negotiations for Glendale Park, and I see Dick Herbert here from the Hospital Hill Neighborhoods Association. Glendale Park, Nick, if you're not familiar, is located behind Quincy Medical Center, and it is the public park, quite frankly, that the city dropped the ball on and gave to Quincy Medical Center when it was privatized. And now it is completely restricted from the public. It's owned by Quincy Medical Center, and there are liability issues why the neighbors, who frankly cleaned it every year for Cleaner Greener, can't access it. It's right on Glendale Road, beautiful spot, terrific location. We gave away a city park, and now, the only reason I raise it is because I've cast a vote, including tonight, for the acquisition of open space. Well, all we, all the folks on Glendale Road got, and the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association got, was a commitment to negotiate, get an appraisal, and to date, we have not heard back. I do not blame you. This is a longstanding issue, but it will be an expensive piece of property. But let us begin here. And I don't want to keep casting votes on properties and all the folks, the good people that live on Glendale Road in that area, when one city administration gives away a public park and then we can't even commence negotiations to get it back or retain public access. I know that the attorneys in the last administration couldn't come to some kind of an agreement with the medical center, at least from a liability standpoint, to get public access to that park. I hope at a minimum that the co-administration is pursuing public access to the park to, you know, make the medical center feel like the neighbors can utilize that park. But I'm hoping one day that appropriation is going to come forward will be for Glendale Park. Okay? That's my soapbox. So I'll get off it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ramondi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Nick. I have a couple of questions of the city solicitor, Mr. President. I just want to provide some clarity on the issue with respect to the Bates apostle. Expand on my questions as much as you want, but I, sometimes you're not available through no fault of your own for some of the public hearings that we've had relative to the rezoning of this particular apostle. And the question always comes up, what's the status of the purchase, and has there been an agreement? And we've gone through two different cycles, and that's been our problem, and I really don't want to have a problem on the third time. And I'm going to be reintroducing the same petition that I introduced last year to rezon the apostle. And what stalled it this year was that there was not sufficient information coming forward that would indicate that. Yes, there has been agreement with the owner. Yes, the city's moving forward. No, there's very little that can happen that would prevent that. So, for the record, the city is satisfied that the entity or owner of the property is the individual or entity that is being represented to be the owner. The city is satisfied with respect to the ownership of the so-called Bates apostle?
Yes, that's correct.
And has there been a series of negotiations going back a number of months relative to the purchase price that the city would wind up owning the apostle?
Yeah, that I'm a little less certain of. And I would refer back, Counselor Cofflin's correct in invoking the name of John Amendolari. There's an attorney who's handled the matter, and when he consulted me with a question, we did have a P&amp;S, and it is for a fixed price. So there is a deal pending.
So obviously, the purchase and sale agreement would speak to the issue that there was some negotiation back and forth. There was an agreed purchase price in both the owner of the property, that you know to be the owner, and the City of Quincy acting through either your department or through the CPC attorney, they agreed to the sum of $50,000.
Correct.
Okay. When was that purchase and sale agreement executed? Do you know?
I do not. I'm sorry.
Is it more than six months ago?
That I'm not certain of.
Could you maybe, are we entitled to a copy of that?
Sure.
Agreement? If you could provide a copy of that and put it in our box, so we'd have an actual record of it, if you could. And the purchase and sale agreement mandates both the seller and the buyer, the seller being the owner of the Bates property, the buyer being the City of Quincy, to appear at a certain place at a certain time and have the buyer, and have the seller prepare a deed, and have the buyer, which is the city, accept that deed.
Correct.
And the sum total is $50,000, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And that $50,000 is the sum of money that's before us this evening to fund the Bates apostle?
Correct.
Okay. Now, with respect to the rezoning, just on this issue, not to make a policy decision as to whether or not you support the rezoning or not, but is there any matter that would preclude the city council from moving on the rezoning relative to the city acquiring the apostle?
Well, no. The acquisition is now, it's further along than the last time I spoke before you. The last time I spoke, there had been a question raised regarding the title, and I believe what I told you, because this is my memory of what occurred, was that I reviewed it with John Amendolari using the online resource and some documents that we had, and I reached some conclusions, but thought that we should have a title examiner at Norfolk County perform an exam. Well, we did do that, and the title examiner's conclusions were consistent with those that, you know, we had reached. So we're all set to go on it.
If the seller does not appear at the closing, then they're in violation of the purchase and sale agreement.
Right, and I'd only anticipate that being an issue.
So is there any anticipation that this sale and purchase will not take place in the near term?
No, they were just waiting for us to get this title done, and there were no issues in that regard.
So with respect to the title ownership, there's no impediment to having a zoning change? The owner is going to be the City of Quincy. For all intents and purposes, it's the City of Quincy now. You just have to go through the mechanics of having that.
Correct, correct. And if, taking you at your offer to amplify on the instance, if something were to go wrong and the deal didn't go through, well, then the current owner would be, you know, aggrieved by our action and, you know, perhaps ask us to revisit it, perhaps not, I don't know. And the council might be inclined to revisit it or not, but that's the worst case.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few points on the Community Preservation Committee, one of which is, as someone who works for a historic preservation organization, Historic New England, we've applied and received historic preservation monies through CPC in the past, and I've had some involvement in that. It is very important where the Community Preservation Committee is comprised of a lot of volunteers. In the past, the applicants have needed to deal with the volunteers, and I really feel it's crucial that the applicants, I mean, many are internal through City of Quincy applications, but those external... Quincy applications, but those external applicants have a point person. So I don't think the $60,000 should offset individual salaries. I support Counselor Gattro's more, break them down, put them across the board. But it is important to identify a point person for these applicants. And in the past, it was the Solicitor's Office. And I know that they are very, very busy, as I had multiple visits last year's funding round to the Solicitor's Office relative to that. The other question that I have, and maybe, is Mr. Palmoche still here? Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. Nick, one, two, three, four, five, of the, well, six of the seven Historic Preservation Projects are City of Quincy projects. And I'm curious if we've been pursuing opportunities to leverage a different, additional grant fundings to match these projects. The Historic Preservation Community grants opportunities that I'm aware of, quite often are looking for a matching source. So, hey, you've got a commitment of $200,000 to restore the stone wall, or, you know, $100,000 for the Stonecutters Museum, that clearly are going to need additional, well, maybe not the $200,000, but some of these projects definitely need additional funding. $42,000 Hancock Cemetery Grave Markers. If you've seen the King's Chapel Cemetery in town, you're familiar with the amount of work needed at the Hancock Cemetery. I think that, I'm curious, what other opportunities this Community Preservation and who's looking at opportunities to leverage funds? If that's the planning department, if they're one of the service groups, I don't think that you mentioned them, but if they're, who's looking at that relative to these particular projects that need funding? Because $30,000 for the restoration of the Southern Tide Mill is a drop in the bucket. And that's a property that is owned by the city.
I know a lot of the programs out there, in terms of leveraging dollars, require a commitment or cash in hand for the money you're leveraging on. So I'm sure now that we're making these commitments, we're setting up these budgets in our system for each of these groups, each of these programs, and for the city projects as well, that we can move forward with the purchase orders for those programs, that we can then actively pursue any other private nonprofit funds that we could seek to leverage.
Yeah, a lot of times, it's too late. You need to be in advance. These applications are out. So when you're in the project planning stages with, this is what we're going for, this is what we're going for, as opposed to, hey, we got the money now. Well, you've missed that cycle of funding to match. So I just want to make sure that we're pursuing every opportunity. Quincy is a city so rich in history, we need to be doing better by our historic preservation. I do appreciate the commitment that the Community Preservation does allow us, because in this difficult budget cycle, it's obviously difficult to look at our infrastructure as the basement of City Hall. Where is the money to get that done? And some of these other projects. So I understand the position that we're in, and these are important projects to get working on, but I would like to see pursuit of matching fundings. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Counselor Palmucci.
Yeah, just briefly. You know, earlier, I joked with Counselor Ramondi about giving us an update on this. But I want to thank him and, you know, as our representative to the CPC, as well as the rest of the CPC committee. It is a volunteer group that meets quite frequently around the time that these applications are due. And I've had the opportunity last year to sit in on a bunch of those meetings, when council president was the city council representative there. And I've popped in for a couple of meetings this year. And it's just, it's good work, and I think that those folks deserve some congratulations for the work that they do on behalf of the city. And, you know, it's difficult to say no to projects, because I'm sure every project that was before them this year, you know, had merit in different ways and had value to the community. And it's difficult to say no sometimes. So I thank them for their dedication and their work and the time spent away from their families for putting that in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think that's a point well taken. There's a lot of folks that have been on the committee over the course of a number of years since it was conceived, and some have moved on, others, the new folks have come on board. There's a lot of time that is spent by all of those folks who volunteer their time throughout the course of the year. And especially becomes busy, you know, once the application process begins about January on until June. A lot of time spent having folks come in, make their presentations, consider those presentations, consider the merit of them. And it is hard to say no to some very meritorious, you know, applications. So really, your words are aptly spoken in terms of the volunteer effort of those who are involved. So, anyway, any further discussion on the amended motion 2010-167A? It was offered by Counselor Keenan and seconded by Counselor Finn. This is the substituted motion. So we need a roll call on that. Did we already settle it?
This is the final.
All right, so this is the final, final to pass. Offered by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Finn. Mr. Clerk, if you please call a roll.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor Mackmaney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmoche.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine members haven't voted in affirmative. That matter passes. Anything else from reports of committees? Seeing none, oh, Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor, 2010-75, this was resolved for the mayor to consider recommendations relative to the budget and the preparation thereof applied 2011, given that the budget has passed. I move that the matter be removed from committee and placed on file.
Counselor Keenan moves 2010-075, be placed on file.
Do you have a resolution?
Clerk of Committees is looking at 075.
We're going to debate on which arm I motion.
Did you want to see a copy of the original? Mr. Fatsis, if you could please pass that down to Counselor Ramondi.
President, the reason why I asked for this, because at the last meeting, we had a bit of a discussion about full-day kindergarten and the, at least to date, the refusal of the school department to entertain a reasonable tuition structure. And I believe a counselor indicated that that matter had never come before the city council before. And I had a reference that, at least on one occasion, if not two occasions. And so I'm referring to Councilor 2010-075, that was introduced on March 1st, 2010. Looks like it was unanimously voted on to go into committee and to be referred to the mayor's office. Now, not that everyone agreed with all these matters that Counselor Keenan put together, but clearly, under revenues, under school department, and I quote, "tuition for full-day kindergarten program." So it really is not true that we have not talked about it and referred it. Obviously, it's up to the chief executive of the school department to make these kinds of determinations. But this was in advance of the budgetary preparation. And I believe that we might have done this, and I yield to the chair of the Finance Committee, that this was not the first time that this matter, quote, "came before the city council." My memory was, if not last year, two years ago, the same matter. So I'll refer to the, I'll defer the council chair of that committee to indicate whether this is the only occasion that we passed on a matter that would entertain a kindergarten fee, or were there previous attempts by the council to refer the matter either to the chief executive or to the school committee. So I defer the chair of the Finance Committee.
Counselor Keenan?
My intent was just to place this on file.
In answer to the Counselor's question, I think that, in fact, you have made these proposals in the past, I recall.
Were the exact ones made? I don't think so, but I believe so, that they probably carried over from the prior fiscal year, or prior budget preparation cycle. I think same recommendations. They were changed a little bit, but I think the full-day kindergarten one may have been referenced in 2009 as well as in 2010. But nonetheless, I would just ask that the matter be placed on file.
My point was, Mr. Chairman, I know that we all make mistakes, and we all have to be careful, but, and I don't think there's any intention to purposely misrepresent matters that came before the city council. I'm not indicating that. But I had a, and I didn't want to engage the council at the time, but I did have a memory that there was a global approach by the chair of the Finance Committee going into this very, very difficult year, to pretty much have a scattergun approach of all the conceivable expenditure cuts and revenue enhancement possibilities. And again, none of us agreed with all of them, but it was just an opportunity to list some of his ideas, refer to the chief executive. And my memory was that we had a, there was a forerunner to that as well. So these are not new ideas that we talked about at the last city council meeting. So I just want to make that part of the record, and I'd be more than happy to support the matter being placed on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keenan moves the 2010-075, be placed on file, seconded by Counselor Ramondi. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor Mackmaney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmoche.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine haven't voted in affirmative. That matter is placed on file. Any further reports of committees? Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily report for committee, but given what we may be facing relative to the open meeting law requirements that were discussed early this evening, for the fall meeting, I would respectfully request that Councilor 2010-65 be placed on the council agenda for an update from the Solicitor's Office. That is resolved. The city solicitor informed the council on the status of the appraisal of Quincy College and the status of the separation of Quincy College and the City of Quincy. It was introduced back in February, just so that we can have it on the agenda as an agenda item, perhaps in September. That's in the Finance Committee.
In the Finance Committee, 2010-065, yep. That has been duly noted. Replacement on the first meeting in September.
Okay. And I did have one other. I hope it doesn't trigger all kinds of action. And it was Councilor 2010-69, this was resolved, that the Finance Committee conduct hearings regarding the strategy of the city in collecting unpaid traffic tickets. We discussed that, I believe, at two Finance Committee meetings. One, early on, before we even had the budget presented, and one, as we were reviewing the budget. So if there's no objection, I would move that that item be placed on file. Just trying to clear up the docket in the Finance Committee.
Counselor Keenan moves 2010-6069, be placed on file, seconded by Counselor Ramondi. Mr. Clerk?
To place Councilor 2010-1069 on file. Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor Mackmaney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmoche.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin.
Yes. Nine haven't voted in affirmative. That matter is placed on file. Counselor Keenan?
Same thing. Councilor 2010-70, this was resolved, that the Finance Committee conduct hearings relative to the possibility expansion of IT Department by providing services to other municipalities. We discussed that on two occasions as well during the budget sessions. So I would move that that matter be placed on file. We may want to reintroduce it at some other point, but at this point, it was targeted, I believe, towards the budget and to resolve the budget issues.
Counselor Ramondi?
President, I'd prefer not to place the matter on file. We have a whole nother year in this cycle. Obviously, if there's no change, we have another budgetary cycle. And I think it's important to have these revenue enhancement possibilities. I know that Mr. Falen has been more than forthcoming in his attempts to do it, but I'm still hopeful that there would be sufficient other opportunities into the fall and into the spring. So I'd rather, so I'd just assume, keep it in committee and have a continuing obligation of the IT Department to explore various ways to provide for increased revenue because of the size of the department and the enhanced capabilities technologically that the City of Quincy has.
That's fine.
So I prefer to do that. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to leave that in committee. Any further items from committee, boards of committee? Seeing none. Petitions, memorials, and remonstrances. Counselor Finn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And very quickly, by way of remonstrance, I know that we've made hard decisions in terms of trying to make certain that, you know, we keep the tax levy and the tax rate down and the like. And yet, clearly, some of the consequences of that are such that some of us will be paying in other ways. And today, with kids coming home from school, I received notice of one of those ways which we'll be paying, which is, the bus will cost roughly $400 for myself with a cap, for the cap at two students, which I'm grateful, because without the cap, I'd wind up owning the bus at the rate we're going. But the, I have no difficulty with that, and I understand that in terms of difficult times and the like. And of course, but the difficulty that I had was that it was given today, students going home, and the deadline for paying is July 2nd. Essentially, I have to come up with $400 within eight days to meet that, in order to participate with the bus. Again, I think I, I would find that very hard to do and difficult to do within an eight-day period of time. And I did have the opportunity then to speak with the superintendent today, because the thought occurred to me that if I have difficulty, then there's plenty of people who aren't exempt through the lunch program or whatever, who federally qualify or whatever, who probably have the same problem, raising that amount of money in that amount of time. And it would seem to me that would make sense to do this in some type of incremental or planned way for people. And he indicated that, you know, he's willing to discuss that and to talk about ways for whom, for families, that it may be difficult to come up with that amount of money in eight-day period of time. And so I just really wanted to take this opportunity in a public forum, first off, to think his willingness to consider that, but also to get that out there for people to understand that, I don't think that that was the most appropriate way to communicate this. And hopefully, they can do something so that people who are willing to pay more and pay their share, that some respect and convenience is directed towards them as well. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Palmoche?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I wanted to inquire of the mayor's representative, Mr. Fatsis, for an update relative to the BG's wholesale that is now opened, operating under a temporary occupancy permit. I believe it was in mid-April that this body addressed some concerns that several members had about the appearance of that store. And I was just hoping we could get an update on the status as to whether or not they're still operating under a temporary occupancy permit and what, if any, progress. I mean, I know visually the progress that I've seen, is I've been closely monitoring that site, but as far as the mayor's office is concerned and the individuals who will be signing off on an occupancy permit and how they're concerned, how their opinion is of the status of that work that's to be done.
I'll be happy to give you an update. I happened to speak to Commissioner Duka last week after he came back from his surgical tour. And that was the first thing we discussed, the, as of last Wednesday, in his opinion, 75% of the building modifications have occurred, and they are working currently to get that to the 100% point. He's very comfortable that they will He's very comfortable that they will make it. The temporary occupancy permit is up on July 15th. The landscape plan, I spoke to the folks at BJ's myself on because I had received some concern from our planning department who had worked with them to get that done. It is their concern that everything would be completed during a planting season that ends June 30th. I was assured that the landscape plan will be completed by June 30th, and again, that is to accommodate the planting schedule and the comfort level. They have to replace whatever dies up there on the site. There have been a number of shrubs and small trees that have already succumbed to whatever. So it came to our, we had a few people call and say what's already been planted has not survived. Part of what had not survived was some plantings done by the state on the median out there, which is not BJ's responsibility, but the state's, we are chasing them on that as well. And Counselor, you had asked me regarding some particular pieces.
And when was the electric box?
The electric box.
That's visible from Center Street. It faces Center Street.
Right. That is part of the landscaping plan. We expect that to be covered as part of the plan, so going forward, that we will continue to monitor. And again, we're not just hopeful, we expect, and we made it very clear to them, that we expect the planting to be done by June 30th on that property.
And I received, the property looks much improved. I think anyone who drives by the, although it wasn't quite what it was billed, it's getting closer to what I think this council envisioned when you authorized the permitting for it. The fake glass facade, I think, has really improved at the, I don't know what, I don't know the architectural term, but the, you know, the molding essentially in the top of the building, it looks much improved. And I've had several constituents contact me and say that they thought this body was crazy when we were talking about these little minor adjustments and why we fought so hard to get those minor adjustments. And several people have reached out to me and said, "I can see the difference now. Now that it's up, I can see how much of a difference it makes for that area." Two concerns that I'll just note, and I'll be finished, but I just want you to be aware of that are concerning to me for follow-up is the number of trees and hedges, obviously, and you said that they're continuing to plant. I guess the rough terrain of Ward 4 is chewing through their shrubbery, but I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll find something that works there. And also the island on Crown Colony Drive, right out in front. It was my understanding that BJ's was going to be responsible for maintaining that and improving it, and it looks a little worn. So I appreciate the update, and is it your understanding that, or is it your opinion that a full occupancy permit will be granted on July 15th?
As long as they continue the schedule. As long as they continue with the schedule, we anticipate that, again, that they are going to follow through with what they've proposed, and that's where we're at with them. I, you know, I would make sure that the final inspections are done, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further under petitions, memorials, and remonstrances? Counselor Ramondi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to reintroduce Council Order 2010-14. I'm sorry, that's not the, that's the purchase. The rezoning of the Bates Passel, I know the clerk has the.
I have the favor.
You have the number, Mr. Clerk?
I'll take the original package and start it again, but we'll have a new number. Do we know the number, Mrs. Olson? 2010-192 is the new number.
2010-192. So I would move to reintroduce that, Mr. President, with the understanding that, I know that hopefully, well, either tonight, later on, if we do schedule a meeting, if we need to have the meeting, fine, if not, but that the understanding would be that we'll introduce this petition tonight, refer it to the Planning Board for its recommendation, and also to the Ordinance Committee for advertising and the establishment of a public hearing to be determined by the President and the City Clerk with sufficient advertisement. That hearing hopefully to take place within the timeframe, which I believe is 65 days from the introduction. I know you and I talked earlier about perhaps having a meeting on the third week of August. That would be the 15th of August, that's the third Monday. That would be consistent with the 65 days, so. So I would move to introduce that rezoning matter, refer it to Planning for its recommendation as well as the Ordinance Committee for advertising and for the conducting of a public hearing, and ask the Chair to put it on the agenda for the special City Council meeting in August, if it is held, both for a public hearing before the council meeting, and then on the agenda for the special meeting in case we have a recommendation from the Planning Board. This will be the third time it's been introduced. We have two favorable recommendations from the Planning Board. Hopefully, after what the City Solicitor just indicated, there should no be any more impediments to the passage of this matter, so I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ramondi moves introduction of a petition for the rezoning of the land on Biden Road, I believe it is.
Off of Biden Road is how we've been describing.
State's property, 2010-192 is the number being assigned. Quest for, Mr. Clerk, if you can look at the, look at your book four, the date that we were talking about.
August 15th is the third Monday. I don't know if that's what the, I'm sorry, August 15th would be the second Monday. I don't know if that's what the Chair had in mind. It's the third week, second Monday.
Today is the 21st, 65 days.
2, 9, 16, 23, and 30 are the Mondays in August.
I'm sorry, I was doing Sundays, 16th.
16, I believe, is the third Monday.
That'd be the third Monday.
Is that the third Monday?
It is. It's 2, 9, 16, 23, and 30.
Okay, so the 16th would be the third, and that would be within the 65 days, so we would be.
Yes.
So is that the date that you're picking, Mr. President, so we can schedule our, it doesn't mean we're going to have a meeting, but if we do have a meeting in the summer, it's going to be August 16th?
Counselors want to look at their calendars?
That's 56 days.
Can't make it. Any feedback from any councils with regard to either the 16th, I don't know, would the 23rd still keep us on that date?
I think it's important, or it's just going to get worse. I think we need to pick a date tonight.
Yeah, no, I just want it all.
The election's going to be easier.
Will the 65 days allow us to go out as far as the 23rd?
Let me see, 1, 2, 3, 9. 56.
That's 64 days.
64 days.
That's the 63rd or 64th day. It's close, but it's in there. They're both in there, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Counsel, go ahead.
Mr. President, are you soliciting, you sent a letter to each member of the City Council, you were going to get it and then make the decision subsequent based on availability?
I did send a memo out. I haven't heard back from anyone yet, but I have a feeling that whether I do it tonight or whether I do it by memorandum, I'm going to run into the same problem. So we have at least two counselors that couldn't make it on the 23rd. We have one, if not, does anyone else have a problem with the 16th of August as a special council meeting?
Whatever you want, Russ.
It's a vote of confidence.
Looks different, these glasses. I could be late. I won't get there till after 8:30.
Why don't we set that date?
16th.
The 16th.
Mr. President, I would move that we schedule a special meeting of the City Council for Monday, August 16th at 7:30.
7:30.
In the Counsel Chamber, for any matters that are on the agenda at that time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, I'd also move that on Council Order 2010, is it 192, Mr. Clerk?
192.
192 is the new number.
Do we schedule a public hearing, now that we have the date, thank you very much, schedule a public hearing on that matter for?
7 PM.
7.
7:15.
7:20.
7:20.
On August 16th.
It's done.
2010 at the Counsel Chambers.
7:20.
7:20.
Oh, my wife doesn't kill me. I'm just thinking I'm going to move my son back into college that weekend. Be interesting. Anyway.
Take a vote on that, Mr. President.
Need a vote?
Sure.
Do we need a vote?
We need a vote to schedule the public.
Schedule the public hearing, we do. To schedule a public hearing, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Finn. Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin. Counselor Mackamy. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. Counselor Cofflin.
Yes.
To schedule a public hearing, 2010-10192, August 19th.
That matter is on the agenda for the 16th as well. Thank you.
16th? 16th, I'm sorry, I said the 19th.
Any, anything further under petitions, memorials, and remonstrances? Seeing none. motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Palmucci?
Yes, I don't know what the proper procedure is on this, but relative to Council Order 2010-168, which we discussed at the last meeting, was the Mayor's proposal for a Fire Department cost recovery program. I remember at that point, I had pointed out some concerns that I had with it, and since then, I've met with members of the Solicitor's Office, and we've worked out some of those concerns. I've passed out a copy to all the counselors tonight. I'm just asking that this be put into committee as amended, so I don't know procedurally how that works, but it's the same ordinance, but it's been amended to some degree. I know it needs to be advertised, so I'm just asking that this be put into committee as presented tonight.
You'd want to substitute.
I would suggest to have the Chair of the Committee remove it from committee, get a favorable vote to do that, and once before the council, then move to substitute that document for that other document, and then refer it back to committee for proper advertising, and then put it on the agenda for August 16th. That'd be my recommendation.
I'll take that on.
I was just going to say.
I believe it's a dual reference to public safety, so I will recommend that it be.
I thought it was in public safety, I apologize.
It is, it's a dual reference, so I'll refer it out, substitute it, put it back in.
Make your motions.
Ask that it be added to the agenda for August 16th.
Got to do one at a time, sir.
All right. So the first step would be to refer out 2010-168 out of the public safety.
Remove from committee.
Remove from committee?
Counsel Palmucci removes, moves to remove from committee the Council Order 2010-168, place it before the body. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
At this point, I believe I'd like to substitute the amended version of 2010-168 that I've passed out to each one of the counselors this evening, the reworked version, to substitute for the previous 2010-168.
Second. Counselor Palmucci moves substitution of an amended 2010-168, seconded by Counselor Ramondi. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFaulin.
Yes.
Counselor Mackamy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Cofflin.
Yes.
To substitute the amended version, I have it in front of me, it will be advertised.
And moved to.
I'd ask that it be referred to, dual reference to the ordinance and the Public Safety Committee.
Point of order, Counsel Gattro.
It's duly referenced to public safety and ordinance. Can public safety advertise?
Of course.
I'm not asking you, Counselor, I'm asking the Clerk.
Mr. Shea?
I would say that any committee chairman could ask for something to be advertised. I thought I heard that you wanted it advertised before the next meeting, that's all.
So it's irrelevant, does it, it fulfills all the requirements for passing an ordinance, correct?
If it's advertised more than 10 days before you vote on it, that would fulfill the requirement, that's correct. Are we advertising it or not?
Yes.
I want to ask, okay, all right, and the fees too. Well, I don't want, it never changed, okay.
Okay. Motion is to refer it back to the Public Safety Committee. All in favor, say aye. Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, under motions, orders, oh. I think I asked for a unanimous vote. Do we need it, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Under motions, orders, and resolutions, anything on this side? Counselor Mackamy?
Since we last met, the Mayor has signed the sound ordinance. In the last meeting, we wanted to discuss an ordinance that would establish a noise-sensitive area, and tonight, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce that primarily because the area that it defines is an area that's very important to me, is the Ward 6 City Council, namely the Marina Bay area, and now that we're in the summer time period, noise is an issue down there, and it also is a very, very big consumer of city services, whether they be the Licensing Board, the Police Department. So I'd like to, at this point, introduce what you already saw in substance last meeting, but was not able to take up due to the fact that the Mayor had not signed the noise ordinance. And I'm going to waive the reading, since I don't need to torture this council this hour, since they've already seen the substance of this.
Do I have a motion to waive Rule 24? Motion made by Counselor McFaulin, waive Rule 24. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor McFaulin?
Yes, question, is it the intention of the Maker of this ordinance to refer it to the Ordinance Committee for hearing at some point down the road?
No, I'd like to vote on it tonight.
I'll object then.
Matter's objected to, lays on the table.
It'll be on the agenda.
Be on the agenda for August 16th.
Thanks, Mike. The people of Marina Bay, thank you as well.
Counselor Ramondi?
President, have a resolution to refer to the Chief Executive. Be resolved that the Mayor forward to the President of the Quincy City Council a list of those individuals who have violated the library's policy against reviewing pornographic material within the past year. As you recall, during the budgetary deliberation, the library director at first indicated that there were quite a number of those individuals, and then she had, following that meeting, apologized, indicating that it wasn't that large a number, that it's really five or six individuals, and I, a number of my constituents are inquiring as to who those folks are, and I think it's important for the public record that at least we have information about that and what the next steps are with respect to the library. Are they banned just from using the computers? Are they banned from using the library? So I would refer that to the Chief Executive, and hopefully the Mayor will get that information and provide it to the Counsel President.
Counsel Ramondi moves his resolution as stated, seconded by Counselor Finn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, I just have two other real quick matters. I had the occasion the last couple of weeks to talk to some folks who are involved with the animal rescue site in the City of Quincy, and you can't get a more dedicated, hard-working group than the folks at the shelter. And apparently, they're engaged. And apparently they're engaged in another shelter challenge, and I guess it's open through August twenty-second. And I think folks just need to go to theanimalrescuesite.com, and I guess you can vote every day. And when I talked to them a couple of weeks ago, and I asked them to contact the president, but obviously with your personal issues, that was not to happen. I was hoping that we'd get some airtime for them, but I would just encourage folks either to reach out to the folks at the shelter, talk to anybody you know, or go to, quote, capital, THE, all one word, well, all consistent, theanimalrescuesite.com. When I talked to them, they were number one, and it's a grant of one thousand, five thousand, ten thousand. That's a lot of money for these folks, and I think we need to support them. So there is a packet, if anybody's watching, I'll leave this with the -- with Jeannie Ridden. So Jeannie, if you can maybe prepare some copies and have them available in the council office, perhaps the city clerk as well, or the mayor's office. I think if we could have city employees and all those folks who are concerned about the shelter, I think it's a wonderful opportunity in these difficult economic times to give them the boost that they so desperately need and so desperately deserve. Again, you will not find a more dedicated, hard-working group of volunteers than these individuals. So if I knew how to do this, I gladly support them, and I'm going to try my best. Maybe Jeannie can hook me up next week, but I just want to state that we -- everyone who's concerned about the well-being of animals in the city and the animal shelters should disband this. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel La Forest?
Yes, Mr. President, I echo Counsel Ramondi's sentiments. I voted last time for their challenge, I vote daily this time for their challenge, I post it regularly on my Facebook site, on my Twitter site, and I encourage those watching at home and following through with Quincy Animal Shelter to become friends of theirs via social media as well, via Facebook, via Twitter. And they are doing a fantastic job. They were ranked number one, and people are, you know, I encourage the kids at home, everybody who is online daily, to just take a moment, once you register, it is such a simple process, pick your city, pick your shelter, name an animal that they show in the picture, and you're done. Very easy to vote daily, theanimalrescuesite.org, dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh.
A quick one. Whereas the city of Quincy has three thousand nine hundred employees, and whereas the city of Quincy seeks cost savings efficiencies to optimize use of technology and nomination as a green community, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Quincy pursue using the munis systems capabilities for electronic payroll, giving employees the option of online twenty-four-seven hour access to their current and past payment stubs, W-2 information, thus reducing paper and postage costs associated with payroll throughout the city. And I'd like to refer this to the chief executive, information technology, and the environment and public health committee.
Counsel La Forest moves her resolve as stated, seconded by Counsel McFaulin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel Finn?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have two short resolutions, none of which need to be dealt with in August, but some updates that I would be interested in. First is, be it resolved that the mayor's office update the city council related to the development of a track at Faxon Field, both the design and mitigation necessary to alleviate concerns of local residents, as well as to the ongoing financing of the project. And through you, Mr. President, I'd like to refer this to the chief executive, obviously, to Public Works and to the Finance Committee, but through you, particularly to Counselor Keenan. It just, again, if I remember correctly, with the original bond issue related to the track, that that was site-specific. So at some point, it was my understanding that in terms of moving forward, the mayor would have to come back before the council. Is my recollection of that accurate?
That's my recollection. My recollection is when the bond order came in, we passed the bond order and made it site-specific to Pageant Field, if I recall, therefore requiring the order to be resubmitted if there was a change in the location of the track.
And through you, then, Mr. President, to Mr. Fatsies, is -- are we -- does the mayor intend to do that at some point?
Yes, he'll come back to the council regarding the site.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fatsies. And I'll just submit this then for the appropriate referral.
Counsel Finn moves his resolve as stated, seconded by Counsel Ramondi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it?
And finally, again, that be it resolved that the mayor's office update us regarding the status of the renovation of the Wallston Theater and the role of the city of Quincy in this development. And I'd refer that to the chief executive, to the library and historic places committee, and to the finance committee as well.
Counsel Ramondi, excuse me, Counsel Finn moves his resolve as stated, seconded by Counsel Palmucci. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Just one other quick matter. Just want to assure my constituents, over the past, well, maybe about a week or so ago, there was a series of car breaks in the Quincy Point community, and perhaps may be replicated across the city and other communities as well. I'm aware of it, the police department is aware of it, I'm sure the mayor's office is aware of it. We're trying to coordinate some efforts with the Quincy Police to have a neighborhood meeting, you know, to have some target hardening concepts. Lieutenant Minton has reached out to me, and I've reached out to him, and our community police officer, Miller, talked to the chief about it, to have a community meeting relative to public safety issues the first and second week of July. We had initially targeted July eighth, and I was hoping to do that, but it looks like the CPC may be wanting to have a meeting on that night. So I just want to assure people that we're aware of it, and we will get all the appropriate folks together to have a community discussion about how to make vehicles more secure, homes more secure. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, counsel. Any further motions, orders, and resolutions on this side? Over here? I actually have two. At the last regular council meeting, we discussed the issue with regard to the donation bins, and it was suggested that what we might want to do is have a placeholder, so to speak, in terms of a moratorium. You should have in front of you a copy of the proposed moratorium that would extend for a period of six months, and I want to thank the solicitors' office for their assistance in getting this before us tonight. So what I would ask is if we could vote on approval of this matter this evening. Mr. Timmons, is this something we can actually move forward in one meeting, introduce and move forward? Or maybe Janet, if you can address that? Because that was the whole intent.
Well, I don't know.
There's a provision within the charter that I'm sure you're familiar with, and others, that you could pass an order through all of stages, provided that no one objects.
Okay.
So you could pass it this evening, conceivably.
Okay. So I would like to move adoption of this order as presented, seconded by Counsel Gattro. Any discussion on it? Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Gattro.
Yes.
Counsel Keenan.
Yes.
Counsel La Forest. Counsel McFaulin. Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Ramondi.
Yes.
President Cofflin.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative, that matter passes. One final matter, it came to my attention, and I, fortunately, due to other circumstances, I was not able to bring this matter before us earlier, but this body passed a home rule petition, which was eventually signed by the governor, which provides relief to members of the National Guard and Reserves who have served in active duty in harm's way, and was a mirror image of what the town of Braintree has done. One of the problems is that, as it was crafted, it runs through fiscal two thousand and ten, which expires at the end of this month. There are some who got their applications in process, but they haven't been brought back to the assessors' office, and in order for those folks that have served to properly qualify, we need to extend out, as Braintree has done, the applicability of this home rule petition. We can do it here, we don't have to send it back up. We just, it was originally crafted that we could extend the date out. So what I'm asking is that we extend the applicability of this abatement process to the citizen soldiers out through fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, is my hope. If we believe what everything that we're hearing, that there's going to be a drawdown of the troops in Afghanistan beginning next year, and perhaps we won't see these continuation of second, third, fourth, fifth, and even sixth deployments of these citizen soldiers serving abroad. So what this is, it's an order, be it ordained, that the Quincy City Council amend council order two thousand and eight dash three seventy-two, an act authorizing the Board of Assessors of the city of Quincy to grant tax abatements to certain military personnel, that that be extended out through fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. Have a second on that? Seconded by Counsel Gattro. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Gattro.
Yes.
Counsel Keenan.
Yes.
Counsel La Forest.
Yes.
Counsel McFaulin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamee.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Cofflin.
Yes. Nine having voted in the affirmative. That matter passes. Are there any other matters come before the council this evening? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we have any other? I just need to schedule Public Works, any first available date, September.
Okay. We have a book open for September. What's the Schedule Public Works Committee?
Counselors, our September meetings are Tuesday, the seventh, is the first meeting. The second meeting is not until the --
Twenty-first?
The Monday, the twentieth, because the fourteenth is a primary election, a state primary election. So it's seven and twenty, counsel.
Okay, then, the twentieth, and if --
There's nothing on the agenda that --
Six-thirty, six-thirty on the twentieth.
Public Works Committee.
Public Works Committee.
You can't say.
All set? Counsel Palmucci?
I'd just like to grab a date for the public safety committee, if I could, at some point in September. I figure I'd grab it now before our calendars all fill up. Any suggestions, Mr. Clerk?
Do you want to do it on --
I could do it on the twenty-first, Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Do you need a whole evening, or did you want to do something just before a council meeting?
I want to have a hearing on a couple of ordinances.
Okay, so you want to do the twenty-first of September, did you say?
Just throwing it out there.
Tuesday, the twenty-first.
What time?
Seven o'clock is --
Seven PM, Tuesday, the twenty-first, Public Safety Committee.
It is booked. Thank you.
It's on the dance card.
Seven PM.
Any further committees' meetings? Counselor --
Certainly, Mr. President. From the Education Committee, just a reminder that the dedication of the new Quincy High School is Sunday afternoon, August twenty-ninth, at two o'clock. If members of the Education Committee and the council would like a tour of the new facility, sometime over the summer, now the school is out. Principal Santoro said he would be more than happy to accommodate us. If you would like, I will arrange that.
Thank you, counsel. Any further scheduling of meetings? Seeing none. Counsel Keenan motions to adjourn.
Very good.
We are adjourned. Eleven twenty.